So bienvenue à tout le monde, good morning to everyone. And I want to begin by saying the offices of the Quebec Community Groups Network are situated on a traditional territory. And I hope I don't mispronounce it, because I usually do. Gagnyengehaga Territories, a place which has long served as a site of meeting and exchange among many First Nations, including the Kanisitaki of the Heda Nosani Confederacy, the Huron, Abenaki and Sinabag Communities, First Nations, we recognize and respect as the traditional custodians of the lands and waters on which we meet today. So, good morning, everyone. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome you all to the first of a series of, call them town hall meetings, call them hearings, on Bill 96. And I would like to introduce some of the other members of our committee, who will, over the course of the four days, also be in fact moderating or just introducing our speakers. And I have Marcus Tabacnik, who's here. Hi, Marcus, good morning. And Thomas, also, who is part of our committee. And someone who couldn't join us today. And I'm sorry, for some reason, I'm losing my Zoom here. Just give me a minute. I'm sorry, the sound was, something was happening with the sound on my end. So, as I said, I'd like to introduce my fellow panelists. And who, Marcus, as everyone knows, I'm sorry I didn't mention, is also works as the head of the Lester Pearson School Board and as executive director of the Quebec Association of the English School Boards. Thomas Ledwell is a former journalist and a digital expert, and most recently worked as a senior manager of the Trudeau Foundation. And my former friend and colleague Joan Fraser, who is unable to join us today, but was a senator and will be joining us next week for the hearings. The four of us are proud to be hosting these hearings and delighted with the response we have received, especially today. There are fifty participants, perhaps more, joining us today. And it's a cross-section of Quebecers, from community activists to constitutional lawyers, to engaged citizens and representatives of various cultural communities, and who have agreed to share their views and aspects on Bill 96. Each presenter will have about ten to fifteen minutes to share their views, and then my colleagues and I will engage in conversation with them. In so doing, our goal is to probe and investigate, and also perhaps inspire you and motivate you as it concerns the Bill 96, which touches all our lives. I should point out that unlike a parliamentary committee, we are not drafting a report or suggesting amendments to the bill, although the QCGN will be presenting, in fact, in front of the National Assembly Committee hearings. In, I don't have the date actually, but maybe Marlene can tell us which date it is. So, the hearings are scheduled for today, as well as next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. until one in the afternoon. This one will run a little bit later, until 1:30. So, everyone go get your cup of coffee or whatever will keep you up. And we look forward to hearing from you in terms of questions. I would like now to welcome our first speaker, Marlene, my former colleague, and also who is the president of the QCGN, and who has been very, very actively working both on social media and also in terms of reaching out to different community organizations to be able to inform them of Bill 96 and also get some feedback. So, without much ado, I'd like to turn it over to Marlene Jennings. Marlene?
Thank you so much, Aleni. Welcome, everyone. Bienvenue à tout le monde. I have to say how delighted I am that QCGN, a community not-for-profit organization that represents English speakers across Quebec, with an annual operating budget of approximately $2.4 million, and with about six weeks, was able to organize these four days of hearings with over thirty groups, whereas the provincial government has had several years in which to organize not just write up its Bill 96, but organize its public hearings through the National Assembly and have somehow only managed to have a list of approximately fifty groups and organizations and individuals from all of Quebec. And they have an operating annual budget for 2021, 2022 of $5.2 billion. So, that tells you just how much a desire there is on the part of this government to actually have real public discourse, debate and consultation. And with those remarks, I will now give you my statement. Today is an important day for democracy as we begin our conversation on the type of Quebec we want to build together. Over the next several days, we will be hearing from a cross-section of Quebecers, legal experts, business people, leaders in education, arts and culture, and health and social services, religious leaders and members of our cultural communities, and of course, Quebec's English-speaking community. We are coming together to share our views on Bill 96, an act respecting French, the official and common language of Quebec. This bill is not a simple update of the Charter of the French Language. Its two hundred and one sections would amend twenty-five pieces of provincial legislation and seeks to amend the Constitution Act 1867. Nor is Bill 96 just about promotion and protection of French. It seeks to fundamentally change the foundations of how Quebec is governed. Manifestement, très peu de personnes ont eu le temps, voire l'intérêt de décortiquer un projet de loi qui fait quatre-vingt-dix-sept pages. Cela semble avoir été l'intention du ministre responsable de la langue française, Simon Jolain Barrette, et de ses collègues du cabinet. Après avoir habilement lancé des balloons d'essai sur des changements radicaux aux dispositions de la loi sur l'affichage, sur le caractère bilingue des municipalités et sur l'accès aux séjats, le ministre Jolain Barrette a tempéré ses propositions relatives à chacun de ces éléments au grand soulagement de bon nombre d'entre nous. Or, le gouvernement n'a jamais pris le temps d'expliquer en détail ce que renferme ce projet de loi. À ce jour, le gouvernement a évité d'aborder les enjeux liés au pouvoir accru de l'office québécoise de la langue française, de même que l'accès à la justice, à l'éducation et aux services sociaux et services de santé. Il semble ne pas se soucier de l'incidence défavorable que le projet de loi 96 aura sur le climat dans les milieux d'affaires, des affaires, une fois que nous serons sortis de la pandémie. Ce qui est encore plus important, il n'a jamais justifié le recours préventif de la disposition dérogatoire, communément appelée clause dérogatoire, pour se soustraire à certaines dispositions des chartes québécoises et canadiennes. Il n'a jamais expliqué non plus pourquoi il s'avère nécessaire de faire la promotion du français. The government's strategy is clearly to stifle debate, which is why it has severely limited the individuals and groups it has invited to appear before the National Assembly Committee later this month. Well, we have news for the government. We have read the bill. We have major concerns. Bill 96 does not reflect our values and the Quebec we want to build together. And most importantly, we insist on our voices being heard. Toutefois, je m'aimerais d'abord insister sur un point avec lequel nous sommes d'accord avec le gouvernement. À l'instant de la communauté que nous représentons, le Quebec Community Groups Network est fier de soutenir la protection et la promotion du français, ainsi que la culture unique des minorités francophones de l'ensemble du Canada, de même que la culture de la province où nous habitons soit le Québec. Les Québécois de langue anglaise sont des Anglo-Canadiens les plus bilingues. En effet, le taux de bilinguisme anglais-français est de soixante-six pour cent chez les Anglo-Québécois. De plus, le taux de bilinguisme chez nos jeunes est supérieur à soixante-quinze pour cent. Ces statistiques témoignent de l'engagement de notre communauté à s'intégrer et à soutenir le fait français au Québec. We are pleased with the bill's creation of a universal right to French instruction. This is a welcome development that the English-speaking community has been requesting for many years. It will assist many English speakers to more fully participate in Quebec society. So, the QCGN is pleased to see this right created for all Quebecers. The QCGN is one of the limited number of individuals and groups that has been invited to participate in the National Assembly hearings. What we hear over the coming days during our own public hearings will inform our position, and we will be attaching the various written briefs that we receive to our own brief. At the outset, I wish to thank the members of our committee. Aleni Bakapanos, a dear friend and former colleague, Joan Fraser, also a dear friend and former colleague, Thomas Ledwell, known for his expertise in journalism and the digital world, and Marcus Tabacnik, who's also known as a leader in education. I want to thank them for volunteering for this assignment. We are grateful for your history of public service and your ongoing contribution to Quebec and Canada. And we thank you once again for stepping up to the plate. As we listen to the input from the participants, I thought it would be helpful for me to share with you the prisms through which I am looking at Bill 96. Premièrement, le projet de loi 96 propose de modifier en profondeur l'état québécois, ce qui concerne l'ensemble des Québécois. Le deuxième prisme est l'incidence que les modifications auront sur les affaires et sur l'économie. Et enfin, le troisième prisme est l'effet dévastateur que ce projet de loi aurait sur la communauté anglophone du Québec. Le projet de loi 96 n'est rien d'autre que la plus grande révision de l'ordre juridique du Québec depuis la Révolution tranquille. Il s'agit en effet d'un projet constitutionnel. Il est branle des décennies de paix sociale liée au français au Québec. Il bouleverse en profondeur la structure et l'ordre juridique de l'état québécois. Il bouleverse quarante ans de protection des droits de la personne au Québec. Si il est adopté, ce projet de loi aurait une incidence sur de nombreux aspects de vie de l'ensemble des Québécois. Il doit faire l'objet de sérieuses discussions et doit susciter un débat en profondeur au sein de la société québécoise. Après l'analyse du projet de loi 96, nous exhortons tous les Québécois à prendre en considération que le fait que ce projet de loi retire au tribunal le rôle d'arbiteur final dans l'équilibre à l'atteindre entre les droits collectifs et les droits individuels. Il a aussi pour effet que les citoyens ne pourront plus s'adresser au tribunal pour demander réparation s'ils estiment qu'il y a eu atteinte à leurs droits et à leur liberté. Selon un ancien maxime juridique, lorsqu'il y a un droit, il y a un recours. Le coloraire de cet maxime est que si n'y a pas de recours, il n'y a pas de droit. Much has been made about Bill 96 and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms notwithstanding clause. This will shield the application of the Charter of the French Language from the fundamental rights and freedoms, legal and equality rights contained in the Canadian Constitution. Successive Quebec governments and intellectuals have resisted the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms because of the way it was negotiated and implemented. But Bill 96 would also substitute and subordinate Quebec's Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms to the Charter of the French Language. And as every Quebecer knows, our Quebec Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms predates the Canadian version and is a point of national pride, reflecting international civil, political, economic and social rights. Quebec is throwing away nearly fifty years of progress on establishing and protecting the rights of its citizens. Instead, Bill 96 virtually hands unlimited power to the legislature and executive branches of government, while decreasing the role, independence and accessibility of the judicial branch. Le projet de loi 96 ne fait que remodeler l'état québécois. Il aurait aussi des effets tangibles sur la société québécoise. Ce serait plus difficile de faire des affaires au Québec. Le Québec va se retourner vers lui-même, au lieu de s'ouvrir sur le monde, ce qui laissera entrevoir une société québécoise moins inclusive. À l'instant des changements qui s'opéreront au sein de l'état québécois, les changements attribuables au projet de loi 96 devraient préoccuper l'ensemble des Québécois. Bill 96 places additional restrictions on the use of languages other than French and additional compliance requirements for businesses. It makes it harder to form and enforce contracts. It makes it harder to attract talent from outside the province. It creates new business risks. Thus, Bill 96 will likely make it harder to do business in Quebec. And all of us should be concerned if the investigators of the Office de la langue française, based on an anonymous complaint and without a judicial warrant, will be allowed to seize our computers and iPhones. This could lead to a business being blacklisted from government business and even losing its permit to operate in Quebec. And finally, Bill 96 will have adverse impacts on Quebec's English-speaking minority in the following ways. Restriction on health and social services in English. Decreased access to justice in English. Decreased access to primary and secondary education in English. Restrictions on admissions to English-language séjats. And finally, decreased municipal services in English. Overall, the bill sends the message to English-speaking Quebecers and indeed to all Quebecers whose mother tongue is not French, that they are not truly welcome in the province. En conclusion, je tiens à vous rappeler que la déclaration des principes du QCGN engage notre organisme à respecter le français en tant que langue officielle du Québec. La version actuelle de la langue française, de la charte de la langue française, engage l'Assemblée nationale à poursuivre les objectifs de la charte, et je cite : "Dans un esprit de justice et d'ouverture, dans le respect des institutions de la communauté québécoise d'expression anglaise et celui des minorités ethniques, dont elle reconnaît l'apport précieux au développement du Québec", end of quote. Fin de la citation. Our belief is that Bill 96 fails to live up to this commitment. This bill endangers the linguistic peace all Quebecers have worked so hard to achieve over the last half-century. In our opinion, it evokes a long time past before Quebec's enlightenment in the Révolution tranquille and an inclusive vision of our society. I have lived long enough to know that language and identity are a sensitive and emotional topic in Quebec. So, while I and QCGN are encouraging all to take part in the debate, we appreciate that discussions may become heated in the coming months. And I urge all of us to be civil, to avoid name-calling, to engage in a respectful manner, to listen to the concerns of our neighbors and to work hard to find a positive and welcoming path forward. Je remercie encore une fois les membres de notre comité et de tous les participants aux audiences publiques. Votre participation au débat et vos points de vue sont importants, et il faut que vous ayez la possibilité de les faire connaître. Thank you so much, merci beaucoup.
Merci, Marlene, and thank you, Marlene. I don't know if there are any questions, but I do want to underline one thing Marlene said, and I should have been more clear at the beginning, that during the hearings in the National Assembly, the QCGN will take into account all the briefs and even attach them, if I understood Marlene, to their presentation and all the points of view will be, in fact, highlighted during those hearings. So, I don't know, are there any questions? It's hard for me to see fifty-five participants, but I see nothing in the chatroom at the moment. Thomas or Marcus, any questions to Marlene? Michael? I'm just giving it a few minutes. Michael, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
No?
No, I might ask myself a question, but that's different.
I thought we were going to ask you the questions. So, thank you very much.
I can ask myself questions to give myself the answers.
So, thank you very much, Marlene. Et continuez l'excellent travail, et nous sommes avec vous dans toute cette bataille. Et c'est une bataille respectueuse, comme on dit, à tout le monde. Et vous avez des salutations, des félicitations quand même de quelques participants. So, without further delay, I'm looking forward to hearing from Michael Bergman. I think Michael is known to most of us, at least I've known him in another life also. But Michael is a veteran legal strategist, and recently he presented to the English wing of the Quebec Bar his comments and opinions on Bill 96. So, Michael, we're looking very much forward to your remarks. And I will remind everybody that we've given Michael about forty minutes. He wants to take forty-five, he tells me, but we're giving him forty minutes. And we look forward to questions perhaps from the participants or even from Marcus and Thomas. So, go ahead. Floor is yours, Michael.
Usually, when I talk about a legal subject, I preface my comments with the following. Legal subjects are fatiguing, boring and tedious. And therefore, if I fall asleep, please wake me up. But on this day, what I'm about to say will put nobody to sleep. On the contrary, you will bolt up straight with tremendous energy. Bill 96. In its essence, it is the creation and imposition of a new social contract between all Quebecers. In that social contract, there is one right and there is one obligation. The right is the right to the French language. The one obligation is that every single person living in Quebec must support the right to the French language. It also, Bill 96, creates a new political arrangement between Quebec and the rest of Canada by unilaterally amending the Canadian Constitution. To unilaterally amend the Constitution by essentially giving to Quebec the effective exclusive jurisdiction over language and culture, to reinterpret the Canadian Constitution consistent with those rights, and arguably to require that all Supreme Court decisions on language rights in this country be reassessed in light of the duty of Quebec and its right to legislate on language and culture. The right to French in Quebec. What is that right, according to Bill 96? Effectively, it is the right to use the French language in every place in the public sphere, in work, in leisure, in culture, in public dialogue. All other languages are essentially private languages. The obligation, because rights give rise to obligations, the obligation is that we must support the right by communicating in the public sphere uniquely in the French language, unless there is an express specific exemption. The target of Bill 96 is not the majority of Quebecers. They surely have no problem with French language because they're francophones. Inherently, they assume they have the right to their language. Inherently, they assume that they will speak in French with each other and with all Quebecers. Bill 96 targets two groups, and only two. The English-speaking minority of Quebec and the allophone minority of Quebec. In other words, the burden to facilitate, support, maintain and promote the right to the French language falls on us. How does the bill do this? It declares that French is the common language of Quebec. And in order to impose, to require, to coerce the common language, it employs a number of tools. The first tool is that the right to French is the supreme right. Normally, in Anglo-Canadian-American political tradition, rights are on a level playing field. They balance each other out. There is no one higher right and no one lower right. But according to Bill 96, the right to French subordinates every other right. In the face of the right to French, no other right can stand. Rights, as we all know, are individual. But Bill 96 creates a different field, sphere of rights, the collective right. Collective rights traditionally are the rights that we have against foreigners, foreign countries, invaders, international relations. The idea of collective rights within the local domestic internal environment is virtually unknown. French will be not only an individual right, but the collective right, the collective right of all Quebecers. And so, again, the collective right of all Quebecers subordinates the individual rights. Collective rights mean that... Collective rights mean that Quebecers are monoliths and that all other rights must be sensitive to that monolith. But there's more. It's not enough that it be the supreme right, the collective right. It is also the right that excludes every other right that has been guaranteed by the Supreme Law of Canada, which is the Constitution. The Constitution is expressly our Supreme Law. Nothing can approach it. Nothing can go further. Except being Canada, of course, there's always a hiccup. Back in nineteen eighty-two, because the provinces would not agree to these guaranteed rights, the federal government agreed to a notwithstanding clause. Every time I hear those two words, notwithstanding clause, I have to laugh because it is like a Santa Claus in reverse. It takes away what was given. And the idea of the notwithstanding clause is that the guarantees fall when it is invoked. It was hoped that this gift-taker would be limited. And so there's a limited number of years renewable, every five years. But now, according to Bill ninety-six, the rights are set aside, guaranteed rights. Also, the Quebec Charter rights are set aside. So you might say, okay, they set aside one, they set aside the other, it's all the same thing. Not quite. Because the Charter of Rights in our Constitution is a charter that guarantees our rights as individual citizens, visa v. the government. The Quebec Charter rights also guarantees our rights, visa v. each other, visa v. each of our co-citizens, our neighbors, our friends. And what does that mean if the Quebec Charter is set aside? It means that every one of us in Quebec can discriminate against the other based on language. You won't speak to me in French, which is my right, then I won't deal with you, I won't rent to you, I won't buy from you, I won't even talk to you. Bill ninety-six then raises the bar. It creates a vast troika of a bureaucracy to reach into every single area of government and Quebec life. A troika consisting of a minister of the French language, a commissioner of the French language, and the Office Québec de la langue française. It's hard to understand how these three groups will do something different from each other. It's almost like they're each watching over each other to make sure they get it right. And why? Because Bill ninety-six says it is the duty of the government, of the civil administration, to assure the exemplary use of the French language through all walks of life, by policy, by regulation, and by law. The minister of the French language will now the minister of the French language will now decide issues of access to justice, issues of access to healthcare, issues of access to anything where language is involved. And since language is the means by which we communicate, the minister of the French language will be everywhere. The Constitution of Canada will be unilaterally amended. Now, most of us are so fatigued about the Constitution, and all that has been discussed in the last sixty years about it. And our Constitution, when you read it, by the way, is definitely not poetry. The Americans like to cite their Constitution because it's so poetic, and it is. Ours is, like I started to say, tedious, fatiguing, and boring, and put you to sleep. Except that's the Supreme Law. It governs everything. Nothing escapes its purview. The Constitution, we amended uniquely by Quebecs say-so, despite the complicated, convoluted amended formula in the Constitution. And how can that be? Well, apparently, all our federal political parties, provincial political parties, all their leaders, federal and provincial, they all agree Quebec can do this. Back this past June, at the initiative of the Book Québecois, a resolution was adopted with only two dissenting independent MPs, unanimously otherwise, to say that yes, Quebec can unilaterally amend the Constitution. Now, that may not, that will not hold up in court, but it still takes away from the discussion, from the debate, anything to uphold the Supreme Law of Canada. Our Constitution will be amended right into its very text. And I quote, "Quebecers form a nation." French is the official language of the Quebec Nation. It is also the common language, unquote. Now, whether or not any person wishes to discuss this Quebeca nation, let's take it for granted that whether we use the word nation, people, or state, these are words that are arguably applicable. Are we the Anglophone and allophone minorities? Are we Quebecers? Now, how can I say, ask that? Because in French, of course, the word is in Quebec, it's Québecois. And Québecois is a kind of odd homonym. Québecois can mean all Quebecers, or it could mean the descendants of the original ninety thousand colonists of New France. To say with the word nation, because in French, the word nation is not the same as the word nation in English. These two words are homonyms. Nation has an ethnocentric quinze to it, element to it. And so it is hard to understand what exactly is targeted by the statements "les Québécois sont une nation." Is it all Quebecers? Or is it the descendants of the ninety thousand colonists of New France? An argument can be reasonably made, and I think justifiably so, that the core question is the identity of those descendants of those colonists. After all, that is why Quebec exists. That is why all the debate for the last sixty years and longer has been going on. French is the common language according to these amendments, the official language. Does that mean there's no other language? Does that mean that my English is restricted to what I say in my home? And then we engage, of course, Bill ninety-six with all the spheres of human activity. French is declared to be the language of justice and legislation. It is the language of work. It is the language of culture, of leisure, the language of integration. The failure to use that language, unless there is a definite distinct exemption, is subject to fines. Now, what to do about all this? I'm sure many presenters before the QCGN raised a number of specific areas. I must say to all of you that yes, Bill ninety-six should be opposed. Yes, it should be contested. Yes, it should be withdrawn. Yes, we should go to court when the time comes to challenge it constitutionally. But I fear that if ultimately the Supreme Court of Canada, and it will go to the Supreme Court of Canada, strikes down Bill ninety-six or strikes down important elements of Bill ninety-six, then we will face in this province, in Quebec, in this country, a constitutional crisis like never before. And that crisis will occur in two, three, four, five years from now, by the time it takes for this case to slowly wangle through the courts up to the Supreme Court. I believe the onus is on our community to propose meaningful amendments that at least will engender and encourage informed public debate. And when I say public, most of all amongst francophones and in the media. For example, instead of saying Quebecers form a nation, we should say Quebecers, regardless of origin, form a nation. At least that means that we are part of that nation. We have the rights of that nation, whatever they may be. That the provision that French is the official language and is also the common language of the Quebec Nation, it should be a sentence added. To say, in addition to the common language, Quebecers speak a diversity of languages. It's not just about one language. It's acknowledging that there are many languages, even if the primary language is the French language. The notwithstanding clause, that will be tested in court. But maybe we can say that to the extent that it is invoked, that the impairment on individual rights and liberties should be minimal, adding that. And what about Anglophones and Allophones having collective rights? I have observed over many decades that every time in court Anglophones argue individual liberties, they almost never win. Somehow, the courts, including this Supreme Court, finds a way to say that the existing Charter of the French Language somehow predominates in some way, to some extent. We argue individual rights. The government of Quebec argues collective rights. Bill ninety-six should be amended to say that we too have a collective right to exist and that our institutions should be respected and maintained. At least then we'll have some tools in the law to defend ourselves in court. And that's important. We all know, we've all heard, I trust, at least those of us who have bothered to read or to listen, that the Office Québec de la langue française will have extrajudicial powers. A lot of people don't really understand what that means. It means they have the power to do whatever they want in inspecting any business. They can make you open your computers, your iPhones. They can make you download information. They can see confidential documents to see if they're in the right language. This must be curtailed. There must be a process, not only of judicial recourse in court. And of course, going to court, as we all know, anybody's going to court. It doesn't take five minutes. It's a process that takes a long time. It goes at a snail's pace. And by the time you get justice, it's like the event is a historical one in the distant past. We need the office to have some sort of judicial authorization. At least these amendments would give us some firm standing, acknowledge our place in the nation or nation, and acknowledge who we are and our contribution, and most of all, our rights. Because there has to be a new social contract imposed and coerced. At least let's also be written into it as having rights and not simply obligations. The problem, the biggest problem of all of Bill ninety-six is that without saying so, but silently, behind the scenes, it says, "The problem is those who are not francophones." That the Anglos and the Allos, they're the tip of the spear aimed at the heart of the Quebec identity. Identity is a big problem in Quebec because francophones have not yet decided how that identity can be so elastic as to accommodate others. It does not mean that francophones are against other people. It doesn't mean they're racist. It doesn't mean they don't want anybody. It doesn't necessarily mean they're xenophobic. It means this is a place that has historically, in the motherland of the descendants of the colonists of New France, they have a shared experience, a shared culture, history, religion, whatever. And they haven't quite figured out where the rest of us fit in in a modern, dynamic cosmopolitan place. I want to, I've always wanted, maybe that's why I'm a lawyer. I want to be a bit of an actor. You know, I say to many people, I say, what's the difference between lawyers and actors? And the difference is this: an actor takes fantasy and makes reality. A lawyer takes reality and makes fantasy. So indulge me for a few minutes while I give you a short fantasy that I have created for you so that you will understand the real practical elements of Bill ninety-six. It's a one-person little play, and I am the star. Thank you. You do not need to clap at the end. I am Bob. I'm the fourth generation of Bobs. Going back to my great-grandfather, all of them have been named Bob. All of them have been in the same business, Bobs Plumbing Incorporated. And I operate the business of thirty plumbers and assistants. We're all master plumbers. I speak French fluently. I operate through my corporation. One day I decide I need to order some materials. I go to the plumbing wholesaler. My friend John, my good friend John, known him many years. And his company is called John's Plumbing Wholesalers Incorporated. And I go to his shop and to his warehouse, say, "Hi, John, how are you today?" And John says, "Bob, I'm great. How are you today? How's the family?" I say, "Very good." I say, "John, I'm here. I need some, I want a hundred elbows and one hundred ABS and one hundred of whatever the heck the plumbers order, whatever." And John looks at me and he says to me, "Je ne peux pas vous servir." And I said, "John, what are you saying?" John says, "Je ne peux pas vous servir." And I say, "John, you know me for years and years. Why are you suddenly talking French to me with both Anglophones?" And the Anglophones says, "God knows what." And John says to me, "Parce que vous avez, vous voulez faire un commandement, vous devez vous déposer et vous êtes une personne légale. Vous êtes une entreprise et selon la loi, je ne peux pas vous parler en anglais parce qu'il y a une introduction pour moi de vous servir. Comment on is en anglais, donc vous devez me parler en français." Bob's upset here, doesn't know what to do. Bob believes in human rights. Bob is fluently bilingual. He's never heard of this in all his life. He decides, better cool off. And he says to John, "You know what, John? I'm gonna go back to my place. I need to calm down." And Bob says to, John says in English to Bob, "Oh, Bob, it's okay. I understand in English." So Bob fires back. "You just spoke in English." And John says, "Yes, because I'm not talking business." Bob goes back to his shop. A man appears, could be a girl too. Man says, "Just wait an inspector. De l'office québécois de la langue française. Je veux voir votre ordinateur, vos logiciels, vos documents, vos paquets, vos archives, vos cartes, tous vos choses, vos contrats, vos risques, tout ça." And Bob says to this guy in English, he says, "What are you talking about? This is my private business. I own this business. You can come here and tell me that you're gonna look at these things. Who are you?" "Oh, je suis un inspecteur de l'office québécois de la langue française. J'ai le droit de demander ces choses et vous devez me prendre ces choses. Et aussi, je prends des photos." "Wait a second. You can't take photos of this place. It's private property." And Bob picks the guy and shows him the door. About an hour later, the inspector comes back and this time he comes back with Jean. Jean is a police officer. Jean, the inspector, comes to this. And Bob says, "Hi, Jean," because Bob knows Jean for many years. And police officer says, "Hi, Bob. How are you? I'm fine. How are you, Jean? I'm fine." And then Jean says to Bob, "Bob, vous devez coopérer, vous devez assister cet inspecteur. L'office québécois de la langue française parce qu'il a le droit de vous fouiller toutes vos choses selon la loi. Vous devez exposer tous vos ordinateurs, logiciels, documents, archives, contrats, etc." Bob says, "Jean." "We are speaking English. Police, why are you speaking to me in French?" "Parce que je dois vous parler en français selon la loi." So Bob says, "I'm not doing this. This is private property. You don't have a warrant, you don't have an order of the court, you don't have an official, whatever it is. I'm not doing it. Please leave." And Jean says to Bob, "Excusez cette triste, Bob. Mais je dois vous arrêter parce que vous avez fait une obstruction de la justice." "Donc, now, Bob, you're under arrest. And I'm gonna have to handcuff you because that is the procedure." So Bob says, "Jean." "Now you're speaking to me in English and before in French. Oh, that's because when I arrest you, I'm acting on a public safety basis and in accordance with natural justice. And the law says that when I act in accordance with public safety and natural justice, which actually says natural justice, I can speak in any language. So when I arrest you, I'm arresting you in English. But when I tell you what to do, I'll tell you what to do in French." So anyway, he puts the handcuffs on Bob, takes him to the police car, takes him to the station. Bob is released on his own recognizance. He's given a hearing date in a month away. And Bob then goes back home and doesn't know what to do anymore. He comes in, his house, his family, his children, his daughter is there. She's upset. "Sweetheart, why are you crying?" She says, "I was rejected to go to the CEGEP I want to go to." "What do you mean? How can you be rejected? You graduated high school in the, at the top of your class. You had the best marks. It's impossible." And daughter says, "But Dad, I was rejected because there's no more room in the CEGEP because there is a limit to the number of Anglophones that can go to the CEGEP. I can't get in despite the marks because they ran out of room. And I don't know what to do." "What the hell is going on here?" My daughter's so smart. Next day, he gets upset, doesn't know, didn't sleep all night. He calls up his lawyer. Says to his lawyer, let's say his lawyer is Michael. I wonder who Michael is. Says, "Michael, I want to sue for the violation, not only of my rights, but the rights of my company, Bobs Plumbing. Bobs Plumbing cannot be searched just like that." "There's no problem, Bob. But I have to tell you, we'll write up the proceedings in English like we always did in the past. But now we need to attach a certified French translation. Otherwise, the court will not take the lawsuit. And what you know, it's gonna cost you more money for the certified French translation." And Bob says, "Are you nuts? Is this crazy? I thought I had a right to access to justice and sue in English. And now you're saying I had to attach a French translation and it costs extra money? How much extra is it gonna cost? It's gonna cost you, Bob. I'm sorry, but we have a translator here in the office. It could cost one or $2,000 more." Bob says, "Ugh." He goes back to the plumbing home store. And he says to his employees, "Well, what happened with the inspector?" "Oh, the inspector took pictures and opened up everything and took all our documents and made copies of everything the inspector knows, top to bottom, all our private business just because it's in English or French." And na, 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 na. So Bob says, "This is crazy." So he summons his general manager. Says to the general manager, "We gotta get these documents back. We can't have these documents floating around with all our numbers and our business. Our competitors would love to see this stuff." Manager says, "Bob, excusez maintenant. Je vous avais pris que vous étiez un employé qui devait me communiquer en français." "Wait, so I've been talking to you in English forever. I'm your son's godfather. And now you're telling me in my own office, my own property that I own, I can't talk to you in English." "Oui, c'est ça. Parce que si non, il se peut que je peux vous divulguer si je parle en anglais et on ne veut pas rentrer dans le langage français parce qu'il y a des amounts." Bob goes home at night, says to his family, "I don't know what to do. We've lived here for four generations. We all speak French. We all brought money to this community. We pay our taxes. We're good citizens. We were never in trouble. And now all this has happened to us. It's like we're cursed because we're English. What do we do?" And Bob says, "I don't know," hangs his head. He starts crying. "Maybe we should do like my sister did back in seventy-six. We have to leave." Family looks around and says, "Dad, we need whatever. Maybe you're right." Bob calls his sister in Toronto, who left in seventy-six. Says, "Sis, I'm thinking about leaving." Tells her why. She says, "Look, if you want, I have a plumbing business in Toronto because I became a master plumber, even though I'm a woman back in seventy-six. I was having the avant-garde. You can join me in the business." "Great." Bob goes out to sell his business. Two million dollars there. He gets a buyer. Buyer gives him an offer to buy, but it's in French. Bob reads French, but he says, "But I'd like to have my offer because this is my business, my heart. It's so much a part of me. It's my gut, it's my soul." "No, no, I can't do that." "Je ne peux pas le faire en anglais parce que la loi dit que les contrats provenant de la région sont autorisés. Mais il est dédié exclusivement à la langue française." They go to the notary and they write up the contract and the lawyer and whatever. And everything has to be registered. And the lawyer says, "I can write the contract in English if you sign saying that you agree they'll be in English. But we have to register this. We're gonna have to register a translation because they no longer accept English documents for registration." Exasperated, Bob says, "What can I do? Just go ahead, do it." Family, they come, family packs up the car, the SUV. Moving truck has already come. Everybody is glum and grim. They don't wanna leave. They grew up here. The roots are here. They always thought of themselves as good Quebecers and good citizens. They spoke French. They have many friends who are francophones. But they have no choice, at least from their point of view. As they about to cross from Quebec into Ontario and forward, Bob's wife says, "This time, Bob, I know what you say every time when we cross from Quebec into Ontario. But let's say it all together. Are you ready?" And the family says it all together. "The roads in Ontario are better than the roads in Quebec. It's like a silk ribbon." And Bob says, "You see, that's how you can tell a place that is free. They know how to repair and maintain the roads." "Thank you."
Michael, thank you so much for really making the point with that play. Unfortunately, so true. I did have two questions. You mentioned during your remarks that you believe there will be a constitutional crisis in five years. And we're reading that less and less young Quebecers are interested in constitutional crises or interested really in what the old guard, if you want to talk about the separatists. So do you wanna say a minute or two about how you are perceiving the fact that there will be a constitutional crisis, taking into account, of course, what you've said about going through the courts and eventually coming to another impasse that we've had in terms of language rights in Quebec?
If the Supreme Court decides that unilateral amendments are illegal, that you cannot unilaterally amend the Canadian Constitution, that you cannot invoke the notwithstanding clause because it has limits, that you cannot make one right superior to all other rights. Then I believe for many francophones, that is like saying you cannot protect your identity. And this is not about a language. Well, of course, a language is key, but the language is an expression of an identity. And identity is in every person's DNA. And nobody wants to be told they cannot protect their identity. So it's not about young people having a different experience and the old guard is slowly aging and dying off. This is about identity. That's why I believe that nobody really pays much attention to Bill 96 in the francophone community or media. Who's going to oppose a law that protects your identity?
I think we have to move on, but Marcus, did you want to ask a question? I saw you took off your mute button. Or Thomas for the minute.
Yeah. My own observation, Michael, and it's obviously not a legal one, is that we don't have to, I don't think we have to wait five years to be in a constitutional crisis. I think the day that 96 is adopted, if it stays in the form that it's in, we've already entered that constitutional crisis. But my other, my other point is having lived long enough to live through all of these battles, this is the legalization of sovereignty association of taking Quebec out of Canada, but maintaining the good stuff, the tax transfers and the use of the sea ways and the armed forces and all the rest of it. But basically, setting Quebec aside from the country of Canada.
I have a different view. There used to be in the 20th century a entity called autonomous or semi-autonomous regions. You have a country that had what was called an autonomous region. There weren't many of them. There were things like Mongolia at one time was an autonomous region of, I believe, China. And during the Japanese Empire, an autonomous region of Japan. And what's gonna happen here is that Quebec will be an autonomous region of Canada. Nobody wants to give up their Canadian passport, Canadian citizenship and whatever. But they want to be an autonomous region. And the problem with what I just said, oh, by the way, I use the word "they," not "us." That's another factor. That's another factor. There is no us. It's all the other them, they, or me, or our group. And let's not forget, because the Federal House of Commons has agreed that Quebec can unilaterally amend the constitution. They're gonna stand by and just watch and clap. And if ever the Supreme Court says you cannot do that, it is possible that the federal parliament will then invoke part of the amending formula, which is another kind of oddity, that the federal parliament and an individual province can amend together powers, authorities and whatnot that affect only that province. So what could argue that is to say Quebec is a nation and whatever the French is a common language nation. It just takes the federal parliament to vote and the national assembly. And given what the federal House of Commons has already done, there is a real likelihood that that will happen. The boot, whoever forms the next government, they've always made promises and they all agree that the French language is in decline and something needs urgently be done. So everybody agrees there's a crisis for the French language and correspondingly and corollarily, a crisis of Francophone identity.
Michael, we have to move on, but Thomas had one question. Quick, Thomas, and then we'll, we have to move on to our next speaker.
Thank you, Lenny, and thank you, Mr. Bergman, very much for your, your remarks. I just wanted to circle back on something you did mention earlier, and it is about language and the us, them, they sort of framing that you've just evoked. In speaking about Quebec forming a nation, you'd suggested that that it should have inclusive more language saying regardless of origin and so on. Strictly from a legal perspective, however, and quite apart from intention, the, the language that Quebec forms a nation, is that not an inclusive term suggesting that, that all should be included? Again, setting aside the intention and taking strictly a legal view.
You know what? You could make an argument both ways. Lawyers can make arguments both ways. And again, the problem is that in French, a nation is a nation. And that's so, that's no centric. But besides that, the whole reasoning, the logic, the rationale to take Quebec as a nation is because there's something about that nation that is unique and distinctive from everywhere else in Canada. And if you look at it that way, then you identify what is the unique feature? Well, there's two unique features. Number one, the French language. Number two, the majority, the overwhelming majority are the descendants of the original ninety thousand colonists of New France. And they have a shared culture, shared history and a shared religion or lax religion and a shared experience. So you could get judges saying the whole idea of this nation, nation is specifically focused on this group, even though majority in Quebec, they're minority in the rest of the country. And, and it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. How a judge or Supreme Court would rule on this remains to be seen, but you cannot here count your chickens before they hatch. Even if they're hard boiled.
Michael, I don't know how to thank you for that thorough and very insightful analysis of bill ninety six and also bringing it home with the play that you put. I think it was very, very relevant to our discussion. I just want to answer some of the questions that are coming. Yes, Michael's presentation will be taken into account when the QCGN does present its brief. Michael, as I said earlier, has already presented to the Quebec Bar Association, the English section. There were a hundred participants. Hopefully all those lawyers are on our side, Michael. And that they do agree with the points that you have raised, which are serious and obviously have long-term implications for the Anglophone community. But I want to thank you again. And we have to move on unfortunately, because we could, of course, talk about this topic with you, Michael, forever. Very insightful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I wish you well in your upcoming deliberations and consultations. I think this is a very, very important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Now it's my pleasure, and I hope he is on the line. It's my pleasure to introduce someone that everybody in the English language community does know and who is a former colleague and friend. And whose declaration during the former language discussions that we've had in Quebec, that everyone knows rights are rights are rights. So Clifford, if you are here, he served during, of course, everyone knows that he served as a minister during the Robert Burassa government and was a member of the House of Commons. My colleague, and he is the most, one of the most respected spokespersons for our community. So Clifford, if you're on, I only see. There you are. Clifford, thank you so much for being with us and the floor is yours now. You're on mute. Perfect.
Hi, Elaine. Thank you for inviting me to this. Elaine, I would like to start my commentary en français. Je voudrais commencer ce commentaire en français. Pour démontrer que pour moi, le français est une partie de mon vécu. C'est une partie de l'étage de mes ancêtres. La première langue que j'ai parlé sur les genoux de ma mère, c'était le français. Pour moi, la loi, le projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize n'est pas une affaire de français et anglais ou autre langue. Je pense que tous entre nous, nous nous réjouissons lorsque le français est bien parlé et bien écrit. Devient, devienne une langue qui est vraiment une des belles cultures internationales. Et tout le monde se réjouit si on peut rendre le français plus florissant que hier. Moi, ce qui me tracasse surtout, c'est pas de promouvoir le français, de le valoriser. Mais la méthode que nous employons pourrait arriver. Et c'est cela que je trouve abhorrent. I am totally against bill ninety six because it is not for me a matter of French or English or another language. But the way we arrive at protecting and promoting the French language. Bill ninety six is abhorrent to me because it is typical of autocracy, of illiberalism, of undemocratic governance. Michael Bergman set out the craziness that is bill ninety six. It's Orwellian. It's autocratic, coercive. Not in all its sections, of course, but in a lot of its sections. When we talk about making French a collective right of all of us, predominant collective right of all of us, fundamental. When we permit entry and seizure as so brilliantly explained by Michael Bergman. When we allow the national assembly to become an arbiter instead of the courts of the French language. When we say that any person in a business of twenty five people or more cannot speak in English to a colleague or write in English to a colleague. Then it seems to me that this is totally unacceptable in an open, free society which wants to be part of the global village of democratic governance. I have heard and, and seen in, in our media and listen and again this morning to Michael Bergman ad nauseam about the ills and pitfalls of bill ninety six. At the same time, as a realist, I can see that bill ninety six attracts a huge majority among the French speakers. And last night's debate of the leaders, it was instructive that every time French was brought up, the protection of French, everybody was, was quick to agree. Nobody said a word. In fact, there was a, a section where, where bill ninety six came up. Not one of our leaders ever said anything negative. And I say shame of them, shame on them, shame on the liberal leader, shame on the conservative leader, shame on the NDP leader. And of course, I won't mention the block. Of course, we expect that from them. But it struck me that in his comments about the English School Board's resolution. Premier ago, attack the resolution, but instructively, he said, they are going against the resolution approved in the House of Commons almost unanimously. Mentioned that the prime minister himself was for this. And I think what they did on the day that they approved a resolution of the Black Quebecois twice in a row to make to make the constitutional amendment of Quebec completely acceptable. I think this is going to have a big impact. Because before, we as minorities, when, when any government produced legislation which was against individual and fundamental rights, we expected the federal government to intervene. I know how difficult it's going to be for those of you who will appear the national assembly to try and amend sections of the bill which are so overwhelmingly approved by the majority of Quebec because they've been, they've been, they've been almost brainwashed to believe that French is in dire peril. So I would concentrate on one item only. The clauses and sections, one ninety nine and two hundred, where the notwithstanding clause is, is, is applied to to cast aside both the Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms of Quebec and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And I've been looking and reading about how the notwithstanding clause came to be within the debates on the nineteen two constitution, which started way back in nineteen eighty one. And even those who promoted the notwithstanding clause at the time felt that it should be a remedial and extraordinary tool in case, for example, a judgment of the courts was so demanding that it was impossible to, to carry it within the public good, so they wanted a bit of time and release time to be able to, to deal with it. All of them, the proponents, said it's almost impossible to believe that it would affect our individual rights and the charter to come. Some of them in fact, gave us an example, the Bill of Rights passed by John D. From Baker in his government to say that, that Bill of Rights contains a notwithstanding clause which was never used. Prime Minister Trudeau himself referred to the Bill of Rights to say, there's an example. It will never be used, so there's no threat to our freedoms and the charter. Premier, the justice minister, Jacques Richard, and, and I've written down, he said, he said, excuse me, I just, my glasses on. He said, it is a safe, safety valve and likely ever to be used. So in the minds of the creators of the notwithstanding clause, there was very, very little, little chance that it would ever be used, that it would ever be used to, to affect our individual and fundamental rights under the charter. My suggestion, and I leave it to you because I know I'll be followed by eminent jurists and experts in constitutional matters. I think that if you try to attack anything which has to do with language, it becomes passionate, as we all know. And it's turned against you as being anti-Quebec and anti-French. I think Bill, the, the judgment on bill twenty one should make us stand up and take notice. That a credible judge of the Superior Court decided that although the case against bill twenty one appeared to him to affect fundamentally our rights and freedoms, he couldn't intervene in a great part of the bill because of the notwithstanding clause. The notwithstanding clause was created to be an extraordinary preventive tool in case. It has turned out now to be to be a pre, preemptive tool to, to in effect, make possible the imposition of coercive and totally unjust legislation on the backs of those least able to resist it. My sense is that it is high time now using perhaps the incentive of the judgment of Judge Blanchard on bill twenty one to have a challenge of the notwithstanding clause before our courts. Not to invoke it in, in regard to language, but to invoke it as a, as a principle. Is it right for any democratic government in a, in a democratic state like Canada to suddenly impose a law that inflicts on all, that, that, that affects all our fundamental rights? Because the notwithstanding clause was not meant to be used in that fashion. It seems to me that there is a case there for looking at a, a contest before the court on using bill twenty one as, as a plank to say, we want the courts to decide whether it is possible in our day and age in a democratic state to suddenly ban all our fundamental rights and freedoms, replace them by collective rights, amend the constitution in one fell swoop. The, the Quebec government realizes, of course, that many of the sections of the bill, all the sections that Michael has brought up and that we've all discussed would not stand a legal challenge because against our fundamental rights. So they, of course, use the notwithstanding clause, knowing very well that it would be that kind of preventive tool. Now especially reinforced by Now especially reinforced by Judge Blanchard's judgment. So I put it before your learned experts that will follow me to ask whether it is not high time that we start contesting the very existence of the notwithstanding clause and the spirit of it and the thrust and intention behind it. If there's such a case to be made because the intention was very clear in all the minds of those that created it, that were for it and even against it. And I wrote in a passage from one of Canada's brilliant legal minds, Maurice Manning, who died earlier this year. And he had made a review of the New Canadian Constitution of 82 and of the Charter. And this is what he said. And I will leave you with it because it, I think it expresses the feeling of most of us who are completely, who find Bill 96 and all its Orwellian craziness completely unacceptable. And this is what he said. If our freedom of conscience or religion can be taken away by a law which operates notwithstanding the Charter, if our rights to life or liberty can be taken not in accordance with the principles of fundamental justice, what freedom do we have? What freedom do we have? For me, it's not a matter of French. I can speak French. I can write French and converse in French. Maybe I'm in Quebec here and I live in Quebec because I find the French fact enhances Quebec as a province and makes life here much more interesting than it would be otherwise. That is not the case for me. The case is one of liberty, freedom, individual rights. What we as individuals, regardless of language or race, whether we are immigrants or as I am, whether we are de souce or whether we are English-speaking, French-speaking, or otherwise. Our basic freedoms is to feel that we live in an open society where we can speak the language we want, where we can breathe the air that we choose to breathe, that we feel totally free. And now, for the first time, I feel that it has become so oppressive now, where you can't say a word against Bill 96 without being told that you're anti-French or anti-Quebec, that you can't speak, as Michael said, in the future, one English-speaking person to another in a firm of 25 people or more. I mean, is this, is this normal? Is this the life that we seek? Is this the life that all of us want to live? Of course not. Time has come to do what Michael Maurice Manning said, you know? If the principles, if the principles of fundamental justice honor there, what freedom do we have? What freedom do we have? Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff, very much. And the fight continues, as you said. And I don't know if there are any questions. There was a question actually on the chat room. And I just want to assure everybody who's on the chat room, there were other questions based on municipal factors and the impact of Bill 96. Hopefully, we will be able to answer those questions in another context. And also, there'll be some experts, for example, in the social service milieu or the, or in the municipal. So we will have an opportunity at the other hearings to be able to address some of those concerns and we'll keep those questions. The question, Cliff, that was in the chat room, and I'll read it exactly as it was said, was, was it not the case that the notwithstanding clause was introduced at the time to say the feelings of Quebecers who were disappointed by the way the constitutional agreement finally was negotiated between the federal government and the other provinces? Are we not surprised that Quebec is now using that as a gamut to get its own way? David asked that question.
Well, what I see of the notwithstanding clause was certainly, it was a tool to bring the various provinces along in the Constitution. But way back when, Saskatchewan and various provinces were for the notwithstanding clause. The Premier Blakeney and others were very much for the creation of the notwithstanding clause because they felt that if they, in fact, this debate started with the Bill of Rights of Diffenbaker. That's why they put it in. Because they were scared that if there was an extraordinary event, they needed this leeway, they needed. And the time the debate took place, as you know, Quebec had walked out of the discussions late in 1982. And the notwithstanding clause was, of course, to placate not only Quebec, but also others, Saskatchewan and others that really wanted to have it there.
Thomas or Marcus, any questions? Thomas?
Just to follow up on the notwithstanding clause. Obviously, this is not the first time it's been used. It's not the first time it's been used by these governments and nor is it the first time it's been used over time regarding language. Mr. Lincoln, I'm interested to know your thoughts. Is there, is there anything on the usage in this case that is distinctly different from some of the other instances in which it's been used? In particular, regarding language, for example, in 1989?
Well, yes, I think there's a big difference. You take Bill 178, which led to the big debate in Quebec at the time with Brassa. First of all, it was a post-event. It was to do with the judgment of the Supreme Court about language, about language of science. So it was, the notwithstanding clause was specific. This time, it's, they used it as a preventing tool on a total legislation, on a blanket way to cover the whole legislation preventively in order to shelter themselves from the courts. I know that the PQs, I believe in the PQ government in, for several years until 1985, they used to apply the notwithstanding clause to all bills in Quebec automatically. It was almost a challenge. But obviously, it didn't have any impact on the bills. Everything carried on the same way. There was no challenge because they applied it holeless, ballast to any bill. But when it comes to bills that have to do with with individual rights and freedoms, this is, I believe, the first time that it has been applied in such blanket fashion to cover a total bill, to abstract it from possible challenges on so many bases. And I think it is the first time that Quebec has gone so far as to use it. I might be, you know, I'll leave it to other experts to correct me if I'm wrong. But I think this is the first time that, for example, the notwithstanding clause will permit the National Assembly to be, in effect, a court of law, to be in a conflict of interest, being its own arbiter of the, of the French language in the bill.
If I may, first of all, it's nice to see you, Mr. Lincoln. It's been a while since I've seen you. And it is inspiring to hear that the passion is still there in everything and every dossier that you deal, that you handle. Is the use or the demonstration of this use of the notwithstanding clause not a threat to the whole country? Already, Mr. Kenny and Mr. Ford in Alberta and Ontario have threatened to use notwithstanding preemptively in other cases. So does this not create perhaps a template for the country to be torn in many, torn up in many ways?
Absolutely. This is why my suggestion was that if we use the notwithstanding clause as a case for a challenge, leaving aside language or anything, it only, it, it's, it becomes more acceptable as a challenge because it's only, it's not Quebec-centric. It is then a challenge based on the principle of it itself, which applies not only in Quebec, but anywhere else. And there's so much literature. There's so much said about when it came about from people that were against it and for it, that certainly it denotes an intention, a feeling that it shouldn't be used in any case to affect individual rights and freedoms. So I think a challenge would be more viewed as something more abstract rather than concentrating on language in Quebec. The notwithstanding clause has been used by Premier Ford recently. He attempted to do it, I believe, by one of the Western provinces as well. So as you say, it would be a Canadian challenge. And I think it would put the federal government on the spot as well for abandoning the defense of individual rights and freedoms in minorities.
I want to thank you once again, Clifford Lincoln, and for your passion, as always, for always standing up for the rights of all people. And again, you know, we'll never forget your famous line, "Rights are rights are rights." And here we are again, defending those rights. Thank you, Clifford. And it's my pleasure now to introduce our next speaker, the English Catholic Council. Sorry, something's happening to my phone here. Is one of those hardworking organizations in our community that quietly but effectively makes a difference. For decades, it has been advancing the interests of the English-speaking community in Quebec with a particular emphasis upon and concern for the English-speaking Catholic community. Its work in welcoming and integrating new immigrants and newcomers in the English-speaking community Quebec is, to say the least, quite impressive. And it is my pleasure and honor to welcome Anna Faro, who has been the executive director for close to a decade, Anna. And we look forward to her insights. So the floor is yours, Anna, and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you so much, Elaine. I'm, I have to confess, I'm a bit abashed to be following Mr. Bergman and Mr. Lincoln. I also have to confess to, to actually coming close to tears in both of their presentations. I have been following, the council has been following this issue for, right from the beginning, obviously. But to hear it put so starkly was, was, was a bit emotional. Thank you for your introduction. Just a word on the English-speaking Catholic Council. We performed in 1981 as a focal point for coordinating community activities among English-speaking Catholics in Montreal. And though we are based in Montreal, the council is concerned with the entire English-speaking Catholic community of Quebec. We are some 397,000 strong in Quebec and are an active presence in society. The passage of Bill 96 as it stands, as we have heard, will have profound effects upon the constitutional, legal, societal, and human rights framework of the province and, in fact, the Federation. The ESCC, like other organizations and institutions that represent the English-speaking communities of Quebec, is gravely concerned with the scope and implications of the bill and its expected outcomes. That is, the curtailment and infringement of Quebec citizens' basic rights and freedoms. The negative impacts of the bill have been well articulated and will be further elaborated by our colleagues at the Quebec Community Groups Network at their testimony before the Committee on Culture and Education in October. It is not our intention to recapitulate those arguments in this statement. And the council is in full agreement with their reading and response to the bill. This is for the record. The council would like to underline its strong opposition to the use of Section 33 of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms to override supposed guaranteed charter rights. We would also like to note the potential exclusionary insertion of Quebecois as an amendment to the Constitution Act. In terms of the use of the notwithstanding clause, it bears repeating in every submission and in every statement that the preemptive use of Section 33 of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms to circumvent application of Sections 1 through 38 of that same charter is one which tips the balance of power towards the legislature and deprives citizens of their freedoms. These freedoms and rights should not be understood as arbitrary privileges to be dispensed by the government, but as human rights that should never be subject to the whims of a particular cohort of elected officials. As in the case with Bill 21, any future legal challenges to Bill 96 will be hamstrung by the use of the notwithstanding clause. And I would like to reference back to Bill 21, as Mr. Lincoln did. In his decision on the challenge to Bill 21, Justice Blanchard of the Quebec Superior Court noted that the bill, and I quote, "brings about serious and negative consequences for all people who display religious symbols in public." But it was not just religious freedoms, freedoms of expression or gender rights, which have been suspended in Bill 21. In applying a blanket suspension of all rights in Sections 2 and Sections 7 through 15, Bill 21 suspended, for example, the right to a lawyer and lawyer-client privilege. Blanchard acknowledged in his judgment that, in fact, none of those suspensions of charter rights matters insofar as Quebec properly proceeded in their invocation of the notwithstanding clause, which it did. As Robert Leckie, who is a constitutional expert and dean of the McGill Law Faculty, and I understand will be speaking to the hearings remarked at the time, the decision highlights the fragility of minority rights in Canada when, quote, "a legislature doesn't have the instinct to check its power." And so here we are with Bill 96. Our second point this morning is a question that was raised by Mr. Bergman. Who is a Quebecer? The QCGN, in their statements, have expressed its concern that Bill 96 narrowly defines an English speaker as one who is eligible for education in an English school, which thereby excludes a large percentage of the Quebec population who do not qualify for an English eligibility certificate but whose mother tongue or preferred official language is English. But the council would like to draw attention to a broader definitional problem which has been introduced in Bill 96. The Amendment to the Constitution Act of 1867 moves the language of nationhood from Quebec forms a nation to Quebecers form a nation. This shift in terminology seems to raise important questions about identity and belonging, which we put before you this morning in the hopes that the constitutionalists with us might provide clarifications and answers to them. It is entirely possible to understand a Quebecer as one who is a resident of Quebec. But that is not the common understanding of the term. Since at least the Quiet Revolution, the Quebecois are those who are by birth French-Canadian, descended from the first settlers of Nova France, and defined by a particular history and culture. And this tacit understanding of what it means to be a Quebecer makes it impenetrable as an identity to those who do not share this history or this heritage. Apart from heritage, it is also not an identity that offers inclusion based on knowledge and proficiency in the common language of French. And this is indicated by the mere 1% of mother tongue English speakers who are employed in the Quebec public service, despite high levels of bilingualism in this demographic. Whether it be newcomers to Quebec or an individual descended from Irish, West Indian, Jewish, or Italian, to name just a few, settlers whose family history in Quebec goes back one, two, or multiple generations, it is not clear that the identity of Quebecer is one that is either offered to or adopted by these populations. Quebec, like Canada more generally, is dependent upon immigration for population growth and economic stimulus. In Quebec last year, immigrants accounted for 17% of the working age population. How many of those immigrants would self-identify as a Quebecer? And more importantly perhaps, how many French Canadians would identify them as such? And so the following questions must be asked. If you are not a Quebecer, what rights do you have within the borders of the Quebec nation? Do you have rights as a Canadian within the Quebec nation? If the Quebec Charter of Rights and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms hasn't been abrogated by both an act respecting the lait cité of the state and the Charter of the French language, where does a resident of Quebec turn to for protection? The two elaborated points are not the only ones with which the council is concerned as regards Bill 96, but I would argue that they are the two upon which all other concerns rest. And I'll finish my remarks with a note of gratitude to the QCGN for providing this forum in which the council is able to voice its objections to Bill 96 and to the panelists for their time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anna, and thank you also for staying on and keeping us in time at this point.
It was a good addition at this point, I think.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it very much, and I'm sure we, we all appreciate, including the participants. Thomas or Marcus, did you have any remarks? Questions? We're actually on time at this point. Thanks to Anna, as I said. Marcus?
Yeah, hi, Anna.
Hi, Marcus.
It's also been a while.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, what are you suggesting or are you suggesting in terms of an amendment or amendments? Are you suggesting that because of the two clauses that you point out that this bill really has to, the end of the story is that it has to go away?
I mean, that, that would be my feeling about this. But, you know, not, not being a lawyer, not being, you know, somebody who's tasked with that. I think our, our role at this point is simply to, to raise the flags, the flags of concern. But it, it should be the end of it. It should be. And I think, and we have, you know, as, as Mr. Lincoln had pointed out and as I noted, we know what's going to happen. We, we've already, we've, we've seen through Bill 21 what will happen to, to any kind of legal challenges because they, they don't have the leeway, by the way that this bill has been written.
Thank you. Thomas?
I had a very similar question actually, related to belonging and what amendments that may lead to. I will jump in simply to say thank you unless you wanted to add anything further to that.
No, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Anna, and thank you for your support also. We'll be moving on now to someone I think that everybody knows, one way or the other, Maître Anne-France Goldwater. Maître Goldwater is a Montreal constitutional and family attorney and senior partner at Goldwater and Dupe. Anne-France, are you, oh, there you are.
Yes, I am.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. It's certainly a pleasure to be here today. I would like to thank the Honorable Marlene Jennings and the leadership team of the Quebec Community Groups Network for having invited me to speak. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of this exercise today. We will have our voices heard by the Quebec government for the record and permanently. Our approaches may differ, but we in this intimate group are on the right side of history today. And I assure you, the federal government will heed our call lest they be remembered as the collaborators in the destruction of this great nation. And I speak as a lawyer, so I speak seriously. The Quebec government may use gentle language to promote Bill 96. "We want to protect French," they say. "We want to promote culture and art." "We are a nation, and a nation protects its citizens." But Mr. Lago hopes that no one will actually read Bill 96. Unfortunately, some of us have read the bill, and we understand that these gentle words mask a very harsh reality, a systemic restriction or elimination of the rights of all people or peoples who speak every language other than French. Notably, yes, English speakers, of course, but also those who speak Mandarin, Spanish, German, and so on. So the question we must ask ourselves is this. Can the government of Quebec sincerely believe for a minute that the wealth and well-being of this province and its residents can be achieved by entrenching an ethnocentric nationalism at the expense of any other identity, culture, or language? Conversely, can the government of Canada be convinced that the wealth and well-being of this province and its residents can be enhanced without curtailing the fundamental freedoms of the people and peoples living within its borders? So I thought the first question that we should ask in analyzing this is, what is Canada? Well, in 1867, we became a nation. That was Ontario and us, Upper Canada and Lower Canada, and this with the British North America Act. But we only really achieved independence as a nation, independence from the UK, on April 17, 1982, with the Constitution Act, of which the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms is the principal ingredient. This is when we evolved from a parliamentary democracy to a constitutional democracy. Now, today, since then, the Canadian Charter is the supreme law of the land. The crowning achievement of Pierre Elliott Trudeau's life was the patriation of our constitution and the adoption of the Charter. But Trudeau's son is too weak and unprincipled a man to defend what his father built over a lifetime. As a mother, I may be saddened by his failure to protect his father's heritage and legacy. But as an attorney, I am appalled that he and O'Toole and Singh and Blanchett have such little regard for the fundamental freedoms of all Canadians that the Charter safeguards. Only the Green Party leader Anna Meepaul has chosen to defend Canada's Charter. Now lest you think I'm being dramatic, Lord knows I'm a dramatic person, let's actually look at the Charter and read Sections 2 and 15 to 20. These are articles that should be read every day and cherished. Let's go. Section 2 tells us that all Canadians, not just Quebecers, this people, that people, this linguistic group, that cultural group, all Canadians, and sometimes even people who are visiting Canada in certain circumstances, have freedom of conscience and religion. That means no one's going to tell me what to think, what culture to adopt, and what language I should be thinking in, or what religion to adopt, or religious artifacts. To be, we have freedom of thought, belief, opinion, and expression, including freedom of the press and other media of communication. This means, freedom means freedom. I can speak in any language I want and communicate to others in any language I want and receive communications in any language I want. We have freedom of peaceful assembly. That means we can form groups and institutions, community groups, like today, the QCGN, in any way we wish and express our thoughts and our beliefs and our religion and, and, and our political notions freely. And we have freedom of association, which is the counterpart of the freedom of peaceful assembly. But we have even more. We have equality before and under the law and equal protection and benefit of law. You know, I could stop there and tear up Bill 96 in a second because the law starts on the premise that not all Quebecers are entitled to services from the government or, or to services from commerce or from each other, to communication with each other, without constraint. But let's read Section 15 because we do have to go further. Every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right of the equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination, and in particular, without discrimination based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability. Putting us in, into categories based on some primitive notion of nationhood, some really folklorish notion of nationhood or ethnic origin is anathema to how we think in the modern era. The Charter goes further and talks about the official languages of Quebec. Section 16, "English and French are the official languages of all of Canada and have equality of status and equal rights and privileges as to their use in all institutions of the Parliament and Government of Canada." My mother, may she rest in peace, was a French-Jewish born in Neuys-sur-Seine, Paris. That doesn't get Frencher than that, right? And she died when I was an infant, so I grew up speaking only English. But that being said, when I read that, I am proud in every facet of my identity that French is already at the summit of power in Canada from coast to coast, or as our American neighbors would say, from sea to shining sea. Why would I want to have less when I already have everything? English and French linguistic, excuse me, the use of English and French in proceedings of Parliament. Everyone has the right to use English or French in any debates and other proceedings of Parliament. Parliamentary statutes and records must be kept in English and French. Proceedings in courts established by Parliament, like our Court of Original Jurisdiction in Quebec, the Superior Court, must offer services in English and French. Our Superior Court judges are bilingual. And any member of the public in Canada has the right to communicate with and to receive available services from any head or central office of an institution of Parliament or government in Canada in English or French. Now, yes, there's an issue. There must be significant demand. Yes, I know that there is a qualification there, but I certainly have never had problem from one ocean to the other, and I travel from one ocean to the other. My daughter studied in Halifax. My ex-husband lives in B.C. I have never had problems having services in English or French because when you're a Quebecer, you don't really think whether you're speaking French or English because to live here in today's world, you do speak both languages, or you should. That, I agree, you should. So, so when you look at the Charter and you burst with pride at the bilingual nature of our nation, of this huge, huge country bigger than the United States, what is the problem in Quebec? Well, I think the Charter is misunderstood in Quebec. A small group of nationalists has been feeding the public nonsense for decades now. Their goal? To convince the public to mistrust the Charter. The Charter is not an impediment to Quebec's aspirations. I have obliged you to read these sections of the Charter with me today, now. Is the French language harmed or helped by the Charter? Penser la question, c'est y répondre. Now, key rights and language that are guaranteed by the Charter have been upheld by the Supreme Court time and time again with energy integrity and discipline, something that other Supreme Courts to the south of us could use. For instance, Manitoba was forced to translate all of its laws from English into French. The Supreme Court said to us, "Adopting a law in one language offends the equality of English and French guaranteed by the Charter." Quebec intervened in that case. Well, what hypocrisy. If Quebec was sincerely protecting the rights of Franco-Manitobans to maintain their French language and culture, why is Quebec prepared to abandon all the provinces of Canada today? Do you think for a minute that Quebec's self-centered and short-sighted tearing apart of the fabric of our constitution will not serve as an inspiration to other like-minded provinces to do the same for their parochial interests? And wither Canada then? Now, there are also key rights on other issues reflecting strong Quebec cultural values have also been upheld by the Supreme Court invoking the Charter. For instance, in B.C., Trinity Western University was not permitted to create its own law faculty that required faculty and students to sign a covenant to respect the religious principle of heterosexual sex within marriage. So that means no gay sex, no bisexual sex, and no extramarital sex, which kind of takes care of 90% of the population, but I guess I'm a romantic. Our highest court reaffirmed that freedom of religion, so the freedom of the people of Trinity Western to express their religious beliefs, also includes freedom from religion. And we know that Quebec agrees with this vision of secularism. So even if we can admire and respect people's individual religious values, there's no right to impose those values on anybody else. Sound familiar, folks? Another key similarity, which dates back, which dates further back, because Trinity Western's very recent, back in Big M Drug Mart in the mid-eighties, the Supreme Court also held that the forced respect of Sunday closing laws, with due exceptions for Jews and Seventh Day Adventists, because we Jews, our Sabbath is Saturday, the forced respect of Sunday closing laws can not be justified under the Charter. Even if this law, the Lord's Day Act, did not require Christians to go to church, couldn't say anything to Jews and other people who have other religious beliefs, this law targeted at Christians did not require Christians to go to church or manifest any religious belief at all. Still, it forced all to have a day off without regard for individual choice. That was illegal to the Supreme Court. Does that sound familiar to you folks? So now that we looked at what Canada is, well, what of Quebec? The Quebec has, Quebec has a Charter adopted in 1975 when Quebecois nationalists aspired to establish a constitutional document in the event of independence. But it is not a constitutional document. In fact, it was in a spirit of absolute irony that Quebec chose to maintain the British tradition of being a parliamentary democracy where any act of the National Assembly may supersede the Quebec Charter. Let's keep in mind again, the Canadian Charter is the Supreme Court of the land, and therefore it supersedes even the Quebec Charter. So remember, the Quebec Charter is not what they're trying to pitch to you. It has no, in fact, has no binding effect. Now, is Quebec, what of Quebec, is Quebec a democracy? Well, Quebec tried referenda on secession. I was alive for that. The population said no, twice, in 1980 and 1995. Jack Parazo, as he then was, threatened the unilateral Declaration of Independence. The federal government, thinking itself clever, and it wasn't a clever move, attempted, accepted to recognize Quebec as a distinct society, but then referred the question of secession to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court held that unilateral secession contemplated by the referendum was in fact unconstitutional. But is this going to deter Quebecois nationalists? Nay, nay. Let us think. Because I want to address the soft federalists who think the way to achieve the solution is to pander to this form of very, very ethnic, very primitive nationalism. Very, me and my wife and my neighbors, Joe and Suzanne, and nobody else, and y'all are all different, and I don't like you. That type of nationalism. Well, let's look at this history. What happened? Bill 101 was not enough, was it? Nor was the language of distinct society. Nor was the language of, well, Quebec is a nation within a nation. No level of oppression, whether addressed at the majority, No level of oppression, whether addressed at the majority. Because make, let's make no bones about it, the French majority in this province is oppressed and deprived of rights that all other Canadians and members of Occident, citizens of Occidental nations enjoy, like the choice of the language in which you educate your children. So no level of oppression of the majority or the minorities in Quebec has ever slaked the thirst of the nationalists. And now, if you read Bill ninety-six, the Quebec government is engaging in a unilateral Declaration of Secession from Canada and its principles. You ever hear of that, a constitution of the nation would have an article unilaterally imposed by a district or a province saying, well, we're the nation, not you. But our federal leaders with the constitution and the Supreme Court behind them are just going to let the country go for shame. Quebec, in fact, is a bigeritical province. Since even before Confederation, Quebec, unique in the Francophonie, has benefited from the direct and indirect influence of the English common law. A legal system unique on the earth in its conception of the protection of contracts and mercantilism. We continue to this very day to benefit from judgments, listen to this people, from the House of Lords that underpin commercial and corporate rights. Moreva orders, Anton Pillar orders, Norwich Pharmacol orders, not going to explain them to to non-lawyers. It's a, that's a course you have to take in those subjects. But these are essential to punish corporate malfeasance. If Quebec wants, as it does, to attract foreign business and investment and wants its businesses to thrive on the global stage. Well, we must have a level legal playing field and have all the arms at our disposal of the civil and common law. Now, is Quebec multicultural? Well, Quebecois nationalists have a vision of Quebec in the year twenty twenty-one as being made up of Brits and French. That's what I grew up with. I never had an identity here as a Jew, because it's the British and the French. And they use the language of Anglophones and Francophones to hide this very strange form of, in fact, racist labeling. This ethnocentric vision was invoked as a justification for Bill one oh one. Now, society did in fact tolerate this vision in the seventies. You remember, the way we spoke and the jokes we told in the seventies are different from today. But it is intolerable in today's world for young people under thirty. A person in today's world chooses his own, her own, or their own identity, n'est-ce pas? Identity is no longer imposed by the state. And a person chooses the art and culture and language that pleases him or her or them. Quebec may try to deny multiculturalism, but this does not fly in a world where we are free to eat sushi and pad thai and dim sum, and dare I say pasta. But if you give a people the opportunity to discriminate, they will. This is human nature. It explains the rise of a Donald J. Trump, or of a Haye Balsonaro, or out of, or a Recep Tayyip Erdogan. We are appalled by their treatment of minorities in the U S, in Brazil and in Turkey, and their suppression of fundamental freedoms and their uncanny ability to call upon the worst of base human instincts. But the popularity of their brand of populism must be resisted, and only the Charter can protect us from this. Mister Lego, you must heed my warning. The proof of the danger of this populism is found in Bill twenty-one. The Quebec Charter did not act as a breaker or deterrent from this heinous abrogation of the rights of visible minorities. But the Quebec government still had to invoke the notwithstanding clause of the Canadian Charter, a provision that permits them to pass an unconstitutional law that will remain in effect for up to five years. Very few people realize this, but when Quebec last did this with the sign law, the Loi sur l'affichage, it was part of Bill one oh one. They quietly let the invocation lapse after that first five years, hoping the public wouldn't notice, and they didn't notice. Who reads laws except for lawyers? But without the Charter, Quebec would now be henceforth empowered to put the discriminatory law to effect forever with complete impunity. So be careful what you wish for, because you may get it. The effort to convince the people of Quebec that Quebec is best served by being left to do as it wishes is hugely dangerous for actual people. I challenge the failure of Canada to insist that Quebec apply the Divorce Act's child support guidelines that apply everywhere else in Canada. Canada quietly kowtowed to Quebec. None of you know this, eh? Doesn't end up in the newspapers, but I do. So Quebec moms continue to get the worst child support in all of Canada, so much for equality of women. I challenge the failure of Quebec to provide protection to common law couples, as is common across all of Canada. The Supreme Court acknowledged that this was discriminatory toward women. But they decided, believe it or not, based on Quebec's distinctness, that they would let Quebec go its own way and continue to discriminate against Quebecois women. That's the Eric and Lola case. So women in Quebec continue to have no rights if they forget to marry their husbands, no matter how long they're with them or how many children they bear. Finally, this you must know, Canada recently adopted a new divorce act that protects women from all forms of domestic violence by their partners, economic, physical, psychological, all forms of violence. But Quebec has no equivalent provisions of law to protect women and children. And these are just the impacts on our family law. Imagine the impact on vulnerable individuals and families across civil society if we continue to tolerate that there will be different rules for different Canadians. So in what do I say the solution is? It's not that hard. First, let's learn from Brexit. Look what happened when a lovely nation, a modern democratic society slipped into populism, nativism, and ethnocentric nationalism. There was flights of international business, fewer jobs and resources and government resources for all citizens, rising social tensions and conflicts. Right now, there's intense competition for international talent. And Quebec is experiencing a severe labor shortage after Mister Lego, of course, threw out all pending visa applications to come live in Quebec. And then, after throwing them out, cut our quotas for receiving new immigrants. Why would we want to make things worse by putting up four walls around our province, filling it up with water, and then drown ourselves in our own solitude? I do not want to live in a ghetto disconnected from the greater world around me. So let's put an end to this misanthropic labeling of angry phones. Me, I'm an employer, not just a lawyer. In my office, you would be hard-pressed to find merely bilingual people. Most of the people who work for me are trilingual. They speak Spanish, or Creole, my partner met the Dubé, or Arabic, or Hebrew, along with English and French. We are lawyers. We represent people, real people, people who need us. People who come from the four corners of of the earth. And I fully expect everyone in my office to to give service to these clients who are paying us with their hard-earned money in the language they speak, not the language Quebec dictates. Remember, the government only exists to the extent that we are willing to give them our hard-earned money. It's about giving us services in the languages we choose, not the languages they dictate. The government, in my opinion, Quebec government, exists to serve the electorate. They are not entitled to pick and choose who they think is merit worthy of respect and dignity. Synathema to our fundamental rights. A government that loudly proclaims it will only provide services to the citizens whom it favors is anti-democratic. A government that requires of parents that they be deprived of the right to educate their children as they see fit. That tells young adults they may not pursue a college education in English. I'm talking about French kids that instructs ordinary citizens to eschew bilingualism so they are cut off from the rest of North America, that's anti-democratic. And a government that instructs private citizens to denounce their neighbors to the authorities. Well, my friends, that sounds like Texas to me. If you need to know what the reference to the Texas means, I'll explain later in questions. I think Quebec has a great deal to offer the world without coercion of its residents. You cannot legislate love of country or culture or art or even commerce. Quebec and Canada thrive and will continue to thrive in the community of nations as a united beacon of democracy and a haven to the world, a role that the United States used to have. Quebec needs Canada, just as Canada needs Quebec. We are diminished without each other. And now, let us call upon our leaders to defend Canada before it is too late. Pierre Elliott Trudeau defended Canada, Jean Chrétien defended Canada, Stephen Harper defended Canada. Who is there in this slate of leaders prepared to defend the nation? They're being, they're asking to lead, to lead it what, into into the ground?
Anne Frances, I'm going to have to, yes, please close. I know your passion, I love your passion, but we do have two other speakers to get to. But please, if you want to wrap up, I appreciate it. I have the most ungrateful job, I have to cut.
I I I.
I've tried very hard not to do that.
Please don't apologize. The slide from democracy to autocracy can happen very quickly. It happened in the, it was was happening for four years in the U S, it can happen here. Is this how Canada will end, my friends, not with a bank, but a whimper? And yes, I'm finished, and I, if there's any time left.
You're never finished, Anne Frances.
I never finish.
Very much your passion.
My my husband had to order me to go to bed last night, said enough.
Yes, I've heard you before, and I I, and you do motivate and inspire me and other women also. And I thank you so much for what you've been doing also on women's rights. I followed your career for a very long time, and thank you. Marlene, you're on. Do you want to ask a particular question, Marlene? Of Anne Frances or just to thank her? Can't hear you, you're on mute.
Anne Frances, I have one word for you. Love, 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 thank you.
It has been a love fest today of the Anglophone and Alaphone communities, obviously, with all our speakers. So Thomas or Marcus, I I, there are a couple of questions, and I just want to wrap up on that. So some of the questions are being answered by Stephen, and I want to thank Stephen for answering some of those questions. We will be addressing some of those other questions by other expert panelists. For example, in the social services or in the educational sector or the municipal in our future hearings, which will take place next week. So I'm not addressing those at the moment. And I want to underline the point that the recording is on the YouTube of the Quebec Community Groups Network. So if anybody wants to go back and listen to each of our panelists, because I know there's been a lot to take in today. And it will be available, the recording, to all participants. So Marcus, did you want to ask a question of Anne France?
Oh, Matt Goldwater, it's a pleasure to 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 listen to you and to see your passion. I have a simple question that will evoke a long answer, which I understand is not difficult for you. There are many groups that are working on meaningful, in quotes, amendments to Bill ninety-six to proposing meaningful amendments. In your opinion, can Bill ninety-six be fixed by a by a series of so-called meaningful amendments?
Bless you, son, for a question that's so easy to answer. The answer is no. You have a law that is based on a false premise, which is that French is endangered in the province of Quebec. Speaking as an old lady here of sixty-one years of age, I grew up in the generation where, me too, I met the people who were not interested in learning French on Montreal Island. Guess what? They're gone. And as I've said a million times in French interviews, I say, bon débat. To stay here, you have to have the wit and charm and entre jeunes to want to be able to function in both languages. And the spirit I grew up with in the seventies in in law school at McGill was that we are all going to be a bilingual nation. Now, I all, I also, this was Pierre Elliott Trudeau's vision, maybe some have been disappointed. I also thought women would achieve true equality in the seventies. It hasn't happened to this very day, which is why I've devoted forty years to of my law career to fighting for women's rights. But I grew up with that. It's my passion. I will never leave this province, no matter what it does. I think the people who have who have stayed have made a volitional choice to live and work in both languages. I think it's a source of intellectual and cultural richness. And I think that's what Anglophones, minority group people who are not, who are excluded from the club, because we're not Québécois de souche, I'm just not a French Catholic de souche, my name's not Tremblay. But we have still embraced this culture. I think that what you need to do, that what would be interesting, though, if you want a solution, in my opinion, is go to the Education Act and reinforce the quality of education in French. We have a crisis in this province for many years of young French-Canadian men, the Québécois de souche, who have the highest rate of dropout from dropping out from high school by the age of twenty-one. I think of anywhere in the world, in fact, a terrible distinction. So I think we need to reinforce the quality of our education. I think we do not do any service to, in French schools, to delay the introduction of English. I think learning two languages creates great mental acuity. You will note in all the private schools, they offer a third language, often Spanish, but it can be others. But to reinforce the Education Act and put more dollars there, I I would pay a higher tax rate to contribute to that. And I think in the quality of English language instruction is abysmal in this province. I hate to tell you, but when I hire an English-speaking person, I'm often saddened that neither their French nor their English is good enough. At least French Canadians from good families who've gone to private schools master their French and have pretty good English, often better than the Anglophone candidates. It's a bit of a paradox. I wonder if I should be admitting it if that's politically correct. But I think the more we improve language instruction, the more we expose kids to more culture. There's no question that the kids should have a richer exposure to French literature earlier in life than they do. We shouldn't be dumbing down French language education. And the personal summit of my life was when I turned fifty and I was invited to participate in the combat des livres and read French literature with other, you know, imposing members of the Québécois community. I swear to you, I cried every night, I couldn't. The the sheer delight I had, this is going to make me cry again, the sheer delight I had to be brought into the richness of this culture was unbelievable. That's because somebody invited me, not because someone imposed it on me. So I think we can do, I think that our tax dollars should go more to education than to creating a new form of, please don't get mad at me, I'm a Jew, it's a language that comes to mind right away. We don't need a new Gestapo where we're starting to think on all each other. You know, like there was some woman who complained, two orderlies in a hospital were speaking, were chatting with each other in Creole. And then people got upset at that. I love learning Creole, I have a Haitian partner, I think it's an awesome language. And but a language with new repression, a language where you have to start at chapter one by saying, let's erase the charters. You can't fix that. That's morally flawed.
Anne, I do have one last question, because we are running out of time. There was a question from Matt. In the event that Bill ninety-six does become law, could the federal government use the power of disallowance to void it? Or has that power atrophied from disuse over the past eighty years?
I I don't think that's our problem. I think that the law could not pass unless the unless Ottawa again gives in, like they gave in on child support. By the way, were you all surprised to learn that Québécois ladies have the lousiest child support in all of Canada?
You've been saying that for years.
Years, I've been saying that, years, but had.
Since Martin and I were MPs, also, by the way, I remember that.
So if the federal government would, you should pardon the expression, put its pants on and do its job. We women here, the women I meet every day, and occasional guys who have custody too, would have proper child support. As long as the federal government does not give in to this aspiration of the Québécois nationalist minority, eh? That law cannot be passed. It would not survive a challenge in the courts. I think judges would be crying with laughter, crying.
So you you agree with our past speakers that that may be the route to challenge the notwithstanding clause itself?
You don't, no, 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 hold on.
No?
You, I'm not going to get into the debate on the night of the long.
We're not debating.
It was very offensive to me that that nationalists tried to appropriate language from another historical tragedy to make it their own, cast themselves as victims. I've always viewed it as the deplorable conduct of both Rene Lavec and the Gang of Eight, right? And and Pierre Elliott Trudeau, a man I do not otherwise love politically, was stuck between those two immovable forces and making a compromise so we could have a constitution, knowing that nobody had the understanding he had how important it was for us to have our own constitution and not still be under the thumb, so to speak, of the U K. So no, that that that's not the the solution. One day, we should get rid of the notwithstanding clause, but we cannot, as a price, to get rid of the notwithstanding clause, as some have proposed, accepting Bill ninety-six and throwing us, all us Quebecers, under the bus, whatever language we speak, whatever cultural beliefs we hold, right? So and and I say, remember, you know, we're speaking here, we're a community group. So, and, and I say, remember, you know, we're speaking here, we're a community group network. But all kinds of people are not in a community group. Again, the choice of, of community and identity is so individual to every person in today's world. We are prepared to recognize in an la of respect. We're not even going to dictate to a person to say that he's a he or she's a he. We let the person choose that. So we cannot just be defined by, well, you're part of this community group or that community group, because we fall into the Québécois nationalist paradigm of dividing people by these labels. We should be able to have an untrammelled individual Canadian identity. In fact, that's what the Supreme Court said in eighty-eight and Big M Drug Mart. They said, every Canadian is entitled to his vision of the good life or her vision or their vision. So the, there is no compromise to be made on Bill 96. All we need to do is find leaders strong enough. What was wrong with Philippe Couillard? Didn't Quebecers like him?
Anne, Anne Francis, I've got to stop you now.
Let's not be, let's not be afraid to be federalist there.
And I, I, I think that the Quebec Community Groups Network knows that and is doing exactly that. They're showing leadership and we need allies. And you are one, and you are one of our allies. And I thank you so much for being with us and sharing your passion, which is always there for, as I said, women's rights, but also all other rights of all individuals. So merci beaucoup, Matt Regalwater, à la prochaine.
Ça m'a fait plaisir, à la prochaine.
So, la prochaine. And I'm looking forward to hearing from Jeffrey Chambers. Jeffrey, I believe you're on. Jeffrey, as everyone knows, is longstanding advocate on the part of the English-speaking community. And you may remember that he played a critical role in the creation of Alliance Quebec and the Clifford Lincoln was a key component to Robert Burassa's use of the notwithstanding clause on language rights. Most recently, as everyone knows, the Quebec Community Groups Network, Jeffrey was the president of the QCGN. So Jeffrey, the floor is yours. And thank you for being with us again.
You're welcome, sorry, I just, I think escaped mute. I, I want to start by congratulating the QCGN in general and, and LEU in particular for the very high quality of briefs you've, you've heard up to now. It's an extremely, what a motivating morning of listening. And I'm looking forward to what we'll hear afterwards, but really a great start. I want to cover a cer, certain amount of the same grounds, maybe from a slightly different point of view, but pretty much the same conclusion as we've heard from everybody so far. Bill 96, if it's adopted in its current form by the National Assembly, will damage Quebec and Canadian social political compact. Will put the continued existence of our nation, national project at risk. This is not a dramatic exaggeration. This piece of legislation is life-threatening to the Canadian Federation. The danger and mischief in ninety-six and Bill 96 exists on three planes. The first plane, on which the bill is dangerous, and is its purported constitutional amendment. The assertion that Quebec or any province can unilaterally adjust the terms of its legal and constitutional engagement with the rest of the country is on its face preposterous. Quebec can declare itself a nation whose internal governance is overseen solely by the National Assembly and not the courts. And any other province can eventually and certainly will introduce its own key principles into the Canadian Constitution. Alberta will declare freedom to extract natural resources a protected right. Newfoundland and Labrador will want permanent guarantee of its finances. B C will want prescriptive control of access to the Pacific. These ideas may seem silly, but there is no more, they are no more illogical than Quebec's claim, Quebec's claim that it can redefine its fundamental character and relationship with the Federation unilaterally. As to the claim that this change is entirely an internal matter, will not affect the rest of the country, like the abolition of the upper house and the provincial legislature. That's a preposterous big leaf invented by the Federal Liberal Party to avoid embarrassing electoral inconvenient debate. But there's no reason to undertake this maneuver, if not to assert additional authority for the provincial legislature, which is definitively and by definition, a change in the Canadian national constitutional framework. Both Meach Lake and the Constitution and the Charlottetown Accord failed constitutional amendment process were broadly acknowledged to have required approval through the Amending Formula. They may have both contained much more extensive adjustment and redesign of the governing apparatus of the Federation than does Bill 96. But fundamentally, they failed on the matter of Quebec's status in the Federation. In the case of Meach, Burassa's implication of the notwithstanding clause in the legislation on language of signs in response to Supreme Court's disallowance of Bill 101's prohibition on other languages and commercial signs provoked a review and a reversal of support from other provincial governments. In other words, Meach Lake failed because Quebec declared itself to have powers of exactly the sort that they're claiming to have now. So how was it that the government of Quebec didn't just put up its hands at that time and say, oh, we don't need your approval? And the similar scenario could, could be sketched out for Charlottetown. So, you know, it's just not plausible that Quebec can decide to create a new status for itself and nobody else has a say. We don't have to speculate about the significance of Quebec government, that Quebec government attaches to the powers which would accrue to it in consequence of this amendment. Federal Liberals may want to declare this adjustment to be cosmetic, but the provincial minister in charge of this initiative, Simon Jelain-Baret, has already been very clear that he believes it would establish Quebec's authority to act unilaterally in a number of spheres in which it is not constrained by the provisions of the Canadian Constitution. So we're on warning, this is not a just piece, a piece of window dressing, this is a serious thing. Bill 96 is mostly perceived to be about the adjustment and redesign of the mechanics of language policy in Quebec. Amendment and updated, updating of Bill 101, Charter of the French Language. And it's not, the day, in, in that, the dangers of this aspect of the project will be addressed later in this brief. But to gloss over the structural change in this purported constitutional amendment will be to miss the most serious threat, the continuing existence of the Canadian Federation. Second plan upon which Bill 96 is dangerous and wrong is the blanket use of the notwithstanding clause to suspend significant parts of the Charter of Rights. I've just said that unilateral constitutional amendment is the worst aspect of this proposed measure. The general suspension of civil, civil rights is a really close second. The Charter of Rights was not meant to establish the rights of Canadians, was meant to define and codify them in a way which would allow them to be consistently enforceable. We've had rights before nineteen, we had rights before nineteen eighty-two. Frank Scott litigated on these matters, lots of other examples, ran up to the Supreme Court without a Charter of Rights to establish concrete set of principles. But they were general principles. We've had inherent rights which date back to the Henry, Henryian rents of the twelfth century, Sachar Ari, Mandamus. I'm not going to remember the other two. And, and to the Magna Carta, habeas corpus. So we, we've had rights. And to just say now that because they're, they're listed in the Constitution but can be overturned by the notwithstanding clause is a really horrible step backwards. Notwithstanding clause wasn't, in my opinion, a bad idea from the start. Its purpose was not to permit general suspension of, of the protection of human and civil rights. It was meant to provide definition and protection for legislation which defended and protected rights at the possible compromise of another right. Cases in which gender rights might be seen to encroach on employment rights, for example, would have to be adjusted. So there was a tool for the governments to, to address those questions. To take a slight side note, although it's not covered by the notwithstanding clause, because educational matters aren't. The prohibition on English-speaking high schools, on elementary and high school students, excuse me, on, on non-traditional English-speaking high school students being able to attend English schools. So an American or a British or an Australian immigrant to Quebec, not allowed to go to, to an English school, is a clear contravention of their rights. And their rights all the way up to the UN Declaration of Human Rights, where twenty-six-three says, parents have a prior right to determine the kind of education that will be given to their children. Absolutely clearly, those, those parents ought to have the right. But Supreme Court said, we have a situation where a, an abuse has got to be redressed. For, for half-century or more, all immigrant children were sent to English schools, whether they wanted to or not, even if they would have preferred to go to French schools. But because of the, at that time, for, for preference of the government to protect the cultural character of French schools, they, they made all of the new, new arrivals go to English schools. And that created a pattern which needed to be adjusted. So we had a Supreme Court judgment that said it could be adjusted. There's absolutely no long-term basis for that to be continued, although it has been reinforced or reaffirmed at least once. So, you know, those kinds of things can happen. But to create a situation where they're systematically protected, where there doesn't have to be a close look at them, is a terrible idea. In liberal Western democracy, the government would give itself the power to enforce any policy in the context of this blanket suspension of all or even broadly defined range of civil and human rights is truly shocking. I won't catalog all of the authoritarian excess of this measure could allow. But it seems pretty clear that the newly empowered enforcement mission, though OQLF, is being invited to indulge in what would have to hitherto have been viewed as undue search and seizure. That's signaled in the bill, there's lots of other things that could happen that could be, you know, as bad or worse. Nothing signals the government's intention to indulge in extreme measures as clearly as the flat declaration that it needs the power and legal authority to do so. All the claims that, oh, we all use this reasonably and we don't intend to overdo it and we'll be, we'll be friendly are really not reliable protection against the absolutely clear legislated right to override these provisions. This piece of legislation addressed any other dimension of our social compact. It would be considered just plain wrong to exempt it from the limitations of the Charter of Rights. Possibly the successful adoption of Bill twenty-one contradicts this assertion a little bit. But even so, it's a shameful act which will be damaging to our reputation as a free and modern society and it must be condemned. The third plan upon which Bill 96 is dangerous is its actual mechanical provisions, the change in function of the Charter of the French Language. This aspect is much more complicated than the clear matters of principle addressed above. The eventual practical implications of these measures is a matter of speculation. Although I thought Michael Bergman's teleplay about the actual experience of an individual going through these stages was a pretty good illustration of how it could play out. Broad assurances of goodwill and good intention from the government are meant to be comforting, but history warns us that they are not to be relied upon. There are quite a few dimensions in which the new provisions are very worrying. They propose to address access to justice, access to health services, professional practice, government services, provincial municipal and business, business, business public interface. There are quite a few more areas in which the bill could be dangerous. And I recommend that expert panels be recruited by the QCGN to study the areas that I've listed and several other areas, including Sage Apps, access to primary and secondary school, contracts of legal documents and a few others. Starting with legal, with access to the courts. The BNA Act creates the obligation for the courts and legislature of Quebec to function in French and English. As a, as a matter of this was a guarantee of the survival of French at the time. But it's evolved into a, a practical provision that results in a high degree of bilingualism in the legal profession. Until relatively recently, the legal system functioned pretty well, two languages. The last decade, the government has ceased to train court stenographers in English. And consequently, the dwindling supply of technically qualified bilingual support staff has compromised the availability of trials and procedures in English. Under Bill 96, the Minister of Justice and not the courts itself, court itself, would decide what language requirements to repeat for the appointment of judges. As the minister has already objected to Superior Court requiring English skills for an appointment on so sure in areas of significant English population. It seems very likely there will be fewer and fewer bilingual judges and an erosion in the capacity of the courts to deliver on their constitutional obligation to provide services in English. The device of quietly throttling supply and watching the situation change over time will lead to a decline in the availability of these services. If it's not a unintended consequence, this is a design feature in the, in the bill itself. The rights of the English-speaking population of Quebec to health services in their own language were only established in law in nineteen eighty-six. Prior to that, the fact that the community had built its own network of institutions was thought to be sufficient protection. This new right was structured around a set of obligations defined for each institution set out in a plan written up by an access committee. This complicated structure has not been very successful at ensuring the availability of healthcare services in English across the province. There's been significant erosion in the capacity of institutions to provide service in English and many service delivery duties have been subcontracted to private entities, clinics, ambulance services, which are not covered by the legislation at all. Under the new ninety-six regime, healthcare legislation would not be changed. They emphasize to us that, oh, your guarantees are still in place, don't worry. The general admonition to all government workers, which would supersede, as it's been pointed out a number of times, Bill 96 would become the defining rule when it conflicted with other rules. All government workers would be advised, encouraged, even instructed to deliver services in French. But the institution will be discouraged or even prevented from requiring English skills in new hires. Employees will be permitted to use English at their discretion under the policy that they should do so as little as possible. And there would be a mechanism for complaint to the office, not to the administration of the health institution, but to the language police. And these investigations could lead to reprimand or even dismissal if an employee is found to be departing from the French-first and only spirit of new charter. So in that context, your actual retail experience, when you go to a, a healthcare interface, will be to talk to somebody who could lose their job if they, if they service you in your, your own language. They may realize that it's a proper thing to do clinically, but they will be facing a, a possible repercussion. I have no idea what that is, we'll just, we'll ignore it. Language is a key factor in successful medical treatment. This is not about social rights, it's about best clinical practice. It can literally be about life and death. The new regime will cause erosion of services available in English and it will cost lives. Every accountant, architect, lawyer or other professional will now be vulnerable to random anonymous complaints that other, that their practice does not operate in French. The office will have the authority to engage in an extremely intrusive investigation, which could lead to professional disqualification. This is police state, state stuff, but there it is in ninety-six, plain as day. You know, imagine a situation where there's a architectural practice or an accounting practice or a legal practice that has a good relationship with its client base and that is functioning well. And somebody, possibly a representative of the Saint Jean Baptiste Society or, or Mouvement Québec Français phones up and has a conversation with a receptionist in English. Receptionist innocently answers questions that are asked about the availability of services and a friendly manner. The next day, the office turns up because there's been a complaint. I was treated in English. And there's no necessity of proof that an offer of French service was declined. It's just a complaint and it's an anonymous complaint and the complainer's identity is protected. The office now has, has the material necessity that it needs in order to intervene in that business and do a full inventory on whether or not there's talk in English over lunch or even over matters of, which will be legal technically, but matters of business strategy. And this is not like, oh, they're going to come in and they're going to criticize you, they can take away your license. So all of those professionals are going to have to decide whether they ignore the law or significantly change their attitude towards their client base. And we actually have, over time, quite a lot of evidence as regards how that'll go. It will not be good for the English-speaking community. In government and municipal services, the same dynamic set out in regard to health services will apply. Public-facing employees will be subject to review and complaint if they choose to provide services in English. A lot too difficult to say this, see where this will lead. Similarly, in retail and other services, service settings, the employer will be subject to an answerable complaint if anonymous and protected objection is registered with the office. It really is getting towards a situation where people are going to be looking over their shoulders the whole time. I don't want to go over my time. In conclusion, Bill 96 needs much more study. But even a cursory review reveals it's a very bad law, which should be opposed with great vigor. Should try to see that it doesn't get adopted, I think that's unlikely and then we'll have to challenge it immediately after it's been adopted. So this community mobilization that the QCGN is undertaking right now, it's really important. And I congratulate them on putting the effort into it and, and hope that it all continues. Thank you all for participating in this exercise, because I think it's the beginning of the kind of serial exercises.
Thank you so much, Jeffrey, for your passion again on being a principal defender of English rights and all rights in Quebec. We appreciate your contribution today. I don't know if there are any questions coming from Thomas or Marcus, but I want to repeat for those people who are actually participating in the chat, all the questions will be answered. We do have three other sessions coming up where there will be expert panelists who we will refer the questions to, as I said, in social services and education. In fact, the next session is on education. And so I invite you to continue to participate. And again, Thomas or Marcus, and thank you Jeff, Jeff for keeping us on time. I appreciate that very much. Thomas?
Yes, Alany, thank you. Mr. Chambers, thanks so much for, for your remarks today.
Yes, Eleni, thank you. Mr. Chambers, thanks so much for your remarks today. Access has been a huge question that has come up over the course of the day thus far and I very much appreciated your focus on that, whether that be the court's education, access more generally. And the question that came to mind is particularly for smaller English-speaking communities outside of Montreal or that are more isolated. Tangibly speaking, what do you think that the access question within this bill, how might that influence day-to-day life in those communities?
I think that the observation made about the Texas abortion law is, it's not outlandish. This is a bill that invites intrusive community kind of supervision in regard to sort of activities that happen in English. So where those activities are more exposed and at risk and not strong, not protected by a kind of shell of community institutions. I think that there'll be complaints all over the place. People will get criticized and punished for using English and they'll stop doing it. I think that'll happen in municipal contexts, you know, all over. So right now, you know, there are whatever it is, 32 municipalities that are allowed to use English. But as a practical matter, and I have some experience with this in eastern townships, pretty much anywhere you phone up, they'll talk to you in English if they can. And in eastern townships, because of the history of the place, usually they can. And it makes for a better, you know, exchange in regard to your municipal taxes or what the recreation policy is or whatever. And they do it. They're not going to be able to do it. They're going to be caught and punished for doing that. And the mechanism for that's pretty clearly laid out. So it's not, you know, like this is some kind of mistake. So I think that that'll happen in the townships and the gas pay will happen, I think, even more quickly, the Laurentians. And it's after, I think that this was dealt with well by Michael. It's after making a cultural change, which over time I think it will succeed in making, which will be very, very bad. I think it'd be bad for the individual communities. It'd be bad for the province. And ultimately, this unwelcome here side of the border is going to be bad for survival of our economy, continued existence of Canada, and that's going to have downsides for all of us. Eleni, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I had a question on the chat that I would like you to address because I think there was either a misunderstanding of what you said or perhaps it isn't, but they're asking, would Mr. Chambers would advocate the dismantling of the English SEJAP system? And the transfer of either one or two years to high school or English universities? So English high school would be grade 12 and 13 or university would be four years? Would you like to address that?
Yeah, I'm a passionate supporter of the SEJAP system. I went to Dawson College in its first two years or two of its first three years and it was a great experience for me and it's been a great experience for my children. I think that, you know, while we have a very worrying number in terms of high school graduation, we have quite a high-quality syllabus in high school. And while we have an asymmetrical treatment of our college structure relative to most of the rest of North America, we have a pretty good result from it. And the English SEJAPs are attractive, I think for two important categories of reasons. One, I think the more important is they're very good schools. You get a good education, you get a good thing, degree, that you can go use somewhere else and people will take it very seriously. It's a thing that's worth giving your effort to. Well, you get an additional benefit if you happen to have some perfection that you'd like to apply to your English conversational or employment skills, you get that as well. And, you know, as we've noted in all this socioeconomic data that we looked at, the upper middle class does a very good job of making sure its kids are bilingual. But the rest of the population is not given very many good tools to do that. And the SEJAP, the access to the SEJAP system is one that many people have decided to use and it works very well. So they get a good education and they round out skill pattern that's very useful for them in the long term. And while serious nationalists often say that bilingualism isn't a bad thing, they clearly don't want it to trickle down too deep into the population because that gives people too many options. And so I think the SEJAP system is a good thing. I think the English SEJAP system is, you know, a thing we should be proud of. I definitely want to keep it. I will make one additional note. This big change that they're proposing is a bit of smoke and mirrors. There has always been a ceiling on the enrollment in the English SEJAPs. There's a ceiling enrollment on every SEJAP and some SEJAPs don't reach their ceiling. Our SEJAPs are popular and they've been at their ceilings for some time. So the idea that they're, you know, cutting off growth, it does make a policy commitment to not reviewing the ceilings and not creating more spaces because there's more demand, which they haven't been doing up to now, but which they up to now could have done without compromising a policy. Now they created a rule against it, but it hasn't really changed that much in terms of the practical circumstances of somebody getting out of grade 11 and wanting to know where they can go.
Thank you, Jeffrey. So we're going to move on because it's been a long morning for a lot of our participants and I see the numbers are growing in our participants. Very interesting development. We went from 60 or 58 to about 72. And thank you. Thank you for staying on and listening to the exceptional speakers that we've had on this morning. So our final speakers are three in fact. Richard Smith, Deepak Awasthi, and he's been very active on the chat line, Deepak. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about your comments and your suggestions to our panelists. And Giuliano D'Andrea of the Greater Quebec Movement. This think tank was founded in 1995 and is dedicated to the promotion and protection of Quebec's Anglophone minority. The organization also explores ways to better integrate Anglophones into the Quebec mainstream. Thank you for being here and the floor is now yours. I don't know who's beginning first, but you can work that out among yourselves. Thank you.
Well, I'll start first. Good morning. Actually, good afternoon. Being that we're largely from the ethnic communities, we're going to start with a little story. I go back to high school and in high school, we had a friend called Giovanni. Now Giovanni, to the Francophone community, was known as a Francophile. To the English, he was a patriot. To us, he was just cool Johnny. Johnny was so cool though that he overreached. He had two girlfriends. First girlfriend was Kate. She was beautiful, blue-eyed, black hair. And the second one was Edith and she was blonde and she was the cheerleader of our school. Problem is, the two girls eventually talked to each other and they discovered that Johnny was double dating them. So what happened was in the cafeteria, they came in stormed down and got so angry and they dumped him right there and then in front of everybody. And that day, we learned a very important lesson. In life, you can't have your Kate and Edith too. That said, I'm going to introduce once again our panel as historic Anglos. And it's a little bit funny that we're considered as that. When you consider Deepak Awasthi is probably the reincarnation of a Sepoy rebel. Richard Smith comes from a background where they defended the independence of Ireland through brute force. And myself, well, I'm from the Italian community and we just recently cheered as we beat England in the European soccer league. And yet here we are, we are historic Anglos. At the same time, if Prince Harry was to move to Montreal and set up shop and want to send his kids to public school, well, he's not a historic Anglo. What's a historic Anglo? And it's a difficult question and we see it in Bill 96 or we see one of the failings of Bill 96. On the one hand, it claims that it's about focusing on the protection of the French language and they keep promising us that it won't affect us as a community. And yet, and I share the opinions of many of the panelists that have been on this morning and certainly our analysis is that the bill definitely infringes on our rights and certainly our perception of who we are and what place we have in the province of Quebec. And it brings us to our analysis. We don't focus too much on institutional rights. They are important, but that's not our focus. There's enough people who can articulate themselves for that. We look at it more from the point of view of we live in Quebec, work here. How do we best prepare our children to integrate into this society, to be part of this society and to get the jobs that, you know, we feel that they should be entitled to. And one of the problems that we've been complaining about for many years is that although, once again, we want our cake and eat it too, although we claim we are bilingual and my God, we've been at this since the late 80s, early 90s and we keep, every five years, hearing how our bilingualism numbers keep going up. And yet, the feeling in the community often is that our graduates don't feel competent enough to actually apply for jobs in the Quebec Civil Service. Or even, they don't even feel that they're part of the public discourse that happens in Quebec. Case in point, Bill 96 was in the works for many months, if not years. We've been hearing the rhetoric consistently from nationalist circles. Well, if we're so bilingual, why were we not there during the inception of these debates to fight for our points of view? Because we're not there. We avoid them. And my greatest concern and certainly the movement's greatest concern is we're having shop talk right now. We're having a conversation among Anglophones. But to the average Francophone, it means nothing. They won't hear it. They may hear it through interpretation of certain journalists. But we could be talking among ourselves for the longest time. And unless we're able to start connecting and becoming part of the mainstream talk, we're not going to get very far. And what we want to share with you is this. Yes, of course, Bill 96 is, the way we put it in our brief, it's a story. It's a story which has a beginning, a middle, and then we all know the conclusion. We all know it will be passed in Quebec City. We all know that we're going to go to court and we all know that huge sections of it will be struck down. We all know that. But what happens to the community in the meantime? What happens to my kid? My kid is five years old. He just started at Giovanni Cabot. You know, I'm hoping that he's going to get a great education. Daddy's there to make sure that he learns both English and French. But at the end of the day, like, are we able to provide all these children with the necessary tools, number one? To be able to compete? And number two, do we push hard enough to actually have Francophones and Anglophones get together and interchange ideas? What happened to lobbying, which was one of the hallmarks of many people 15, 20, 25 years ago in our leadership communities? Where's the lobbying? And often, at the ground level, we don't see it. So from an ethnic point of view, certainly from the Italian community, of which I was offered a spokesperson for, the feeling is that to some extent, you've got to think of the song, "Qu'est-ce que ça va, ça va, whatever will be, will be." It sounds like fatalism to a lot of people, but it really isn't. It's the idea of arranjarsi, which is, we're going to have to somehow make do with this. And the Italian community is incredibly integrated into the Quebec workforce, into Quebec politics, into into mobilization. And yet somehow, we can't seem to bridge all these communities, whether it be mine, whether it be Mr. Awasthi's, Mr. Smith and so many others. We can't seem to get them all together under one big tent so that we can speak forcefully. Evidence of that is fundraising and I keep coming back to this. I was on the QCGN for two years as a member of the board, so we know each other quite well. But I can tell you, fundraising has to happen at a local level. And as we point out in our brief, those who fundraise together, well, they stick around together and they get far. And once you're fundraised, once you are a power out there because you can raise money, you get to define who you are. They don't define you. And the biggest problem that we see in when it comes to either being a historic Anglo or an Anglo who chooses to call himself one or not, is it's up to us to make our own definition as to who we are. No one else should be telling us what our identity is. I think of all those kids who are now attending French school because their parents thought it was better for them to do so. Do they cease being Anglos? Can you revoke your Anglo, like, identity or does it disappear? What if you're an Anglophone, pure and simple, and you've decided to come back after so many years living outside of Quebec? Are you still an Anglo? Who defines you? And that's the sad aspect of the debate swirling around Bill 96. And this shameful, this incredibly shameful display of a member of our community who has an opinion and expresses it, Joe Ortona, to be slammed down the way he was is shocking. I don't have to share Joe Ortona's opinion. I don't have to share any of the so-called angry phone opinions. But they have a right to their opinion. They have a right to express their opinion and they have a right to engage with other people. And somehow, there's this pressure being put on our community to be silent and, you know, just simply accept. So it's with some defiance at least, that we look upon Bill 96. Not in terms of its content, but in terms of its ideological its ideological foundations, if you will. And it's something that we're hoping to send the message out that we disapprove, knowing full well that it'll probably mean nothing. But at the same time, we're calling upon all Anglophone associations, particularly ethnic ones, to start mobilizing, get together, get to know each other, start building our own identity. As a Montrealer, I have a very strong attachment to the Montreal region. I know that it doesn't matter if it's my Francophone neighbor, my Lebanese neighbor. They all have the same attachment to time and place and local community. More of that should happen. More of that should be said, more of that should be done. And I really hope that as a postmortem, once this thing unfortunately gets through, that we can start entering into a dialogue with all our ethnic communities, many of whom are not represented, and start getting that kind of representation and look. And the other flip side of it is, if we're fair en français, I mean, we have the capacity of speaking directly to our Francophone neighbors and that's not happening. Somehow, it's politicians who do all the chatter, but we implicitly know that whatever comes out of Quebec City often is not a reflection of how the average Quebecer feels. And I hope you've read the brief and I hope you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Giuliano. I don't know if Richard or Deepak. Oh, somebody has to mute. I don't know if Richard or Deepak, you still have a few minutes before one. I know, Deepak, you've been very active. Oh my gosh. Could everybody mute, please? I don't know what's happening. Take a minute. Okay.
No, you're not muted. You'll have to lower the volume.
Okay, Deepak.
I think what I'm trying to say and Giuliano and Richard are trying to say is that essentially, we have failed to define ourselves. And as Giuliano said, you had the Joe Ortona case yesterday and last night, you had the case of Justin Trudeau finally saying to Blanchet that, hey, you know, we're all Quebecers. You can't define us. You can't tell me that I'm not a Quebecer. And the answer is yes, we are all Quebecers. And what Mr. Legault and what Blanchet and other people did over the last few days is to discredit us. Is to say that we are marginal. We as a community, our ins- Is to say that we are marginal. We as a community, our institutions, our representatives, those who speak on our behalf are in fact marginal and they are trivial. And we are not trivial. And I think we have to, we as a community, or better yet than as agglomeration of communities, because we are not one community, we are a number of communities, we should be standing up and saying, no, we are not going to be defined by you. We are not going to allow you to tell us what is in fact a Quebecer. And whether or not we agree with you on the issue of Quebec as a nation, or Quebec as an independent nation, or as an autonomous nation, or as a nation altogether. I mean, those are questions that are to be raised with us. With respect to consent, I think minority consent, I think this is, Richard will raise this at some point. And the issue is there is that we as a minority community, if they cannot impose upon us, if the federal government cannot impose upon Quebec, nor can the provincial government impose upon us because we have certain rights. Perfect example is our institutions, our English language schools. They are ours and effectively, the institutions should be protected. And then we should have the right to say how we want to deal with it, or how we define ourselves. And as Giuliano said, you know, who is an Anglo? Am I an Anglo? Is Giuliano an Anglo? Is Marcus an Anglo? Who is an Anglo in this context? I mean, many years ago, when I was a school commissioner, effectively, I was told, or all those who are not Protestant, were told that we weren't Protestants. We were merely Protestants for educational purposes only. And that was shameful. Today, we're being told we're not Quebecers, we're honorary Quebecers, we're Quebecers for residency purposes only. That is shameful. We have a voice and our voice should be heard and it should be represented. So that's it.
Thank you, Deepak. Richard, did you want to say a few words? You're muted.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll just build on what Deepak and Giuliano have both said. Essentially, the problems of trying to congregate everyone together for a community that historically was not a natural one. My grandfather was a prominent person in the Irish community of Quebec and ran one of Montreal's biggest charities and was a grand marshal of the parade. But I mean, he never really considered himself an Anglophone, even though he didn't even speak French. And our family goes back six generations in the province of Quebec. So this has been a big challenge, not only now, but going into the future with whatever happens to this bill. I'll put quickly into the chat an article, I've had several over the last few months on CTV Television, as well as in the Montreal Gazette. The Montreal Gazette piece deals, builds with the consent issue that Deepak mentioned. That it's, not only is it hard for us to come together with a unified voice and we have to work on that, but also there's, in part, one of the consequences of that could be that Francophones, who are much more cohesive, feel that they can do what I call this kind of Quebecois or Francophone unilateralism, which started in the case of Bill 101. And has continued, is very much a feature of this government. And Premier Legault himself revealed this point of view in an interview with Global Television two years ago, where he dismissed opposition to Bill 21, saying, well, it's like Bill 101, they'll be angry for a few years, but then they'll get over it. And this is a problem. We are at a historic moment in our community's history. We have to revisit tactics, revisit how we approach this thing because otherwise, this is going to be the way that things continue to operate in Quebec. You know, they'll be mad for a while and it's only an elite that's mad and they'll get over it. And they, you know, any rights that we get will be at their mercy, at the mercy of the CAD government. And whenever it's opportunistic for them to scapegoat our community or some other community, that will happen. So it's very important we start to think of tactics, new tactics, because in the past, you know, there'll be the legislative, if the bill is passed, there'll be the legislative aspect, but then other tactics as well. But that will come later. So the only other thing I could recommend is, we must be careful when we say just stop Bill 96. Because I think we're at risk of saying we're stopping the debate. And obviously, there's a majority of the Francophone community, either rightly or wrongly, feel there's a problem. And if you try to start a discussion by essentially dismissing their concern, you're inviting yourself to be isolated. So it's one, I would suggest probably in practical terms, it would be good to try to broaden the debate and say that the Bill 96 is a start and it obviously expresses a lot of concerns for Francophones. But the debate should be expanded and maybe the government shouldn't feel that it has to take, has to set artificial deadlines for itself so immediate. And it could reopen the process other than just limiting it down to the two or three groups that will now appear before the parliamentary commission.
Thank you, Richard. I don't know if Thomas or Marcus, my two colleagues, have any questions? Thomas?
Nothing from Eleni, but thank you all for your presentations.
Marcus?
No, no, nothing special. I don't feel like picking a fight with Deepak today, so.
Is there history there? Is there history? Sometime, other time, you'll have to tell us.
We have a history.
All right. So with this, I want to thank you gentlemen and thank you very much for being here today. I also, on behalf of the QCGN network, want to be able to thank, thanks, excuse me, thank, first of all, Metre Michael Bergman, who gave us an excellent, and even if it was long, I think was very pertinent presentation. Of course, my former colleague and friend Clifford Lincoln, who's always there in the forefront defending our rights. Anna Faro, thank you so much for being here. Metre Anne France Goldwater, what can I say more about Anne France? But thank you also for being here. And Jeffrey Chambers, of course, who has been a longtime advocate for Anglophone rights and also, as I said, former president of the QCGN and of course, the Greater Quebec Movement. Two things I'd like to say, first of all, besides the thank you, that we have reached out, and I speak on behalf of my other colleagues on the committee, Thomas and also Marcus and Joan, who's not with us, and of course, Marlene, and Marlene can add if she wants to at the end, that we have reached out to Francophone groups. We have also reached out to Alaphone groups. If I can use the example of my own community, I have spoken to the Hellenic Canadian Congress to try to bring forth a brief for comments, perhaps in the next three days. Please do not forget that we do have three other hearings that are coming up next week. The first one is on education. And we'll hear from Robert Libman and other experts. And I want to thank each and every one of the participants who stayed with us from 10 o'clock this morning until 1:30. And I want to challenge them, first of all, to please sign the petition, which the QCGN has put out there. I think it's very important that we stand together with the QCGN in terms of Bill 96. Whether we'll stop it or not is another matter, but I think we do have to all stand up and we have individual responsibility also and a collective responsibility to speak to our MNA's and our MPs. For people who think that is insignificant, I disagree. Having been a former member of parliament, when you're getting 5,000 people calling your office or writing a petition, you do take notice and let's not take for granted that each one of the MPs and MNA's actually has read, not to prejudice anybody, but in my humble opinion, they can always learn, as I, as an MP, always learned from any group that came before me, something new about a piece of legislation. So I think it's important we continue to advocate. And Richard, thank you for all those articles in the Montreal Gazette. I think they are helpful. I think one of our main responsibilities to inform people of their rights. Whether they join us or not, we hope they will, but we do have a responsibility to inform. So Marlene, I'm going to give you the last word. Besides telling everybody, all this is available in social media of the QCGN. And I want to thank the staff. And I particularly want to thank also Jonathan Goldblum for also putting all this together. And he's been working very hard behind the scenes to be able to organize the hearings. So Marlene, the last word is to you. And thank you, everyone.
I just want to thank you, Eleni, and your colleagues, Thomas and Marcus. And I know Joan will be joining you next week for doing a great job of moderating these panels. I want to thank all of the panelists. You have each brought something important to this discussion. And I think that the idea that it's not sufficient to stop Bill 96, but that it has to become, as much as possible, a real discussion and debate across Quebec society about what kind of society do we want to live in going forward in the coming decades? What kind of democracy do we want to have? I think that's really important. And in terms of the Francophone side, QCGN has been reaching out to Francophone organizations, whether it's Le Conseil des Patronnes, La Fédération des Étudiants Sichépiens du Québec, Chambre de Tamers de Montréal Métropolitaine, you name it, we've reached out. We've also reached out to all of the MNA's, regardless of their political party. And so, yes, we have been reaching out. The media, we don't control the media. The Francophone media decides if it wants to invite us to discuss Bill 96. If they accept our op-eds, which to present, to date, they have not accepted, none of the Francophone newspapers have accepted to publish our op-eds, but we continue that work. Thank you, everyone. And please do tune in next week and tell your friends and colleagues and families and give them this information about this public discussion and debate that's going on. And encourage them to participate. Thank you so much, everyone.
Have a great day, everyone, and we'll see you next week.